Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, January 29, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kiel Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Addie Lord.
My name is Addie Lord. I'm a resident of Greenfield. I know a lot of you had a very late and long day yesterday, so I appreciate seeing you here today. I am the founder and president of Project for Responsive Democracy, which is a social welfare organization working to promote and support public access to participatory decision-making in government, and also the fiscal sponsor of the Not on Our Dime campaign. And I wanted to start today by saying how incredibly excited I was to see two ordinances introduced last week, and then one yesterday from council to propose referendums to be approved by voters in May. As I'm sure that you're aware, as Pittsburgh voters, we only get access to this method of direct democracy maybe once every other election if we're lucky. And as elected officials, I know that you're all familiar with the process of gathering signatures for your nomination petitions. And I hope you can imagine what it might take for voters in Pittsburgh to muster the resources to get 12,500 valid petition signatures to amend the Home Rule Charter. And I think while the Not on Our Dime campaign, as I have heard, has been circulating petitions, we've heard a lot of people mention how they would love to see more opportunities for direct democracy. And I think of the ideas that I have heard, many of them don't make sense as an amendment to the Home Rule Charter, so I would love to, and hopefully does not come off as a surprise, to have more suggestions for how council might be able to help this direct democracy process. And I think the first would be to follow the lead of the county Home Rule Charter, where electors have the ability to propose ordinances by a petition process. And then with that, I can imagine things like, in Denver, they have, a couple years ago, had introduced a sidewalk maintenance fee by referendum, which allowed property owners to pay a set annual fee, and then the city is responsible for maintaining sidewalks everywhere. I think that there could be more in terms of ordinances to help support bike infrastructure or any number of other things that don't make sense quite in the same way that you would find in the Home Rule Charter. I know that allowing voters of Pittsburgh to help decide the direction our city takes can be a fantastic way to get more participation in the governance of the city and in government in general. And while it's a weekly occurrence for all of you, I'm sure you also know how empowering it can feel, knowing that our vote can influence the well-being of our neighbors. Thanks for taking time to listen to me today.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kenneth Mostern.
Hi, my name is Kenneth Mostern, and as a Jewish resident of Lawrenceville and a member of the Steering Committee of Not on Our Dime, I would like to laud Councilmember Strasburger and her co-sponsors for introducing legislation making it illegal to discriminate against anyone on the basis of race, religion, national origin, or association with foreign nations. Obviously, this is something we can all agree should not be legal. My main pause was, why stop here? It's not clear why gender, sexual orientation, transition status, et cetera should not have been in the proposed law. I see there's now a proposal to amend it. I also am still mystified that anyone thinks that this has anything at all to do with the Not on Our Dime legislation, which prohibits the city from doing business with anyone on the basis of their engagement in genocide, ethnic cleansing, or apartheid, all of which the state of Israel is engaged in at present. The propensity to commit these crimes, all of which are already illegal under U.S. and international law, is unrelated to people's race, religion, national origin, or association with foreign nations, and that's why there are so many Jewish people like myself organizing with and in the leadership of Not on Our Dime. Imperfect though it is, I expect to urge all Pittsburghers to vote for Councilmember Strasburger's legislation when it appears on the ballot in May. In the meantime, I'm here personally to request that Councilmember Strasburger and her co-sponsors sign our petition, or even better, simply put our proposed law on the ballot without making us conclude the petitioning process. I look forward to a yes-on-everything campaign with all of you this spring.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Eric Oss.
My name is Eric Oss. I'm a Lawrenceville resident. I'm a member of the Not on Our Dime Steering Committee as well. I work mostly on local political campaigns and know very well of the commitments made in this room to local labor organizations, and wanted to speak today mostly on 1425 with some of my concerns from reading what was put forward last week. I'm hoping that what was put forward last week was done so honestly, so that this process and these words that are heard today from people will be part of an engaging process and listened to earnestly. But first, let me just start by saying, I really want to applaud council for, you know, having anti-discriminatory laws. I think those are great, and really want to commend Councilwoman Strasburger on that as well, so thank you so much. But I do want to mention, however, some concerns that I had at least in my layman's reading of, again, 1425, just when it comes to unintended consequences with the referendums that are currently, the way they are currently written. My primary worries are in the section that reads, quote, "Associations or affiliations with any nation or foreign state." Firstly, I looked up these terms, association, affiliation with any nation, state, or religion, and I couldn't find them. There's no public policy anywhere as these as a protected class, so that really just makes me a little bit concerned about unintended consequences as far as it not being completely thought through. And also, in addition to, again, the associations of affiliation with any nation or foreign state, to me would seem to indicate that the city would have issues when it comes to purchasing certain goods based on locality, and I know that that would run counter to some of the commitments made in this chamber when it comes to our local labor organizers. As I understand in my reading in 1425, if we had not, ooh, hold on, in 1425, if we had the lowest bid for a city contract on software, we would not be allowed to choose that. We would not have a choice between a foreign or domestic company. We'd choose the, quote, lowest bid, 50 seconds, lowest responsible bid. If we wanted to consider a contract between a unionized workforce and one that had a history of labor violations, we would not have that choice either. It would be the lowest possible bid. I hope we can all think about the potential consequences of the current language as it is currently written, even with the amendments that have been provided today. And I really appreciate council for offering these referendums for what I hope is an honest and collaborative process, and for introducing more direct democracy to our ballots in May. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Benjamin Case.
My name is Ben Case. I'm a resident of, oh, did I push this?
It'll start automatically for you.
I'm a resident of Fineview, and I'm also one of the organizers on the Not on Our Dime referendum campaign. As are many of my friends, I'm excited to see city council applying the tools of direct democracy, and I'm also happy that you want to strengthen protections against discrimination in our city. As someone who organizes on Not on Our Dime, people keep asking me about the proposed referendums, 1425 and 26, as though they're in conflict with our proposed referendum. Some have even suggested to me that it was the intent of these referred initiatives specifically to conflict with our citizen-led effort. I don't know if that's true, and I hope it's not, but I do want to say for the record, I don't see any major conflict. I hope voters get to decide on all three of these referendums in May, as well as the additional one to keep our water a public resource, and thank you for supporting that as well. Not only do I not see a conflict, I think the values are basically aligned, but because I keep getting these questions, I do want to take a quick minute to clear the air about what the Not on Our Dime referendum is trying to do. We're saying that we don't want our public resources going to foreign countries, such as the state of Israel currently, that take discrimination to extremes. For example, by imposing an apartheid system in which people either have rights or don't have any rights based on their race and religion, as goes on today in the occupied West Bank, or by trying to ethnically cleanse people from an entire area based on their race and religion, as we've seen in Gaza. Most of all, we want Pittsburghers to be able to vote on bringing these aspects of our values in line with our public resources. You know, we believe these values include human rights for all, and the strong belief that all people are created equal regardless of race, religion, backgrounds, gender, sexuality, and so forth. And we think our public finances should reflect these values, and at very least that we should be transparent about it. So I hope that clarifies a little bit about what we're trying to do. Of course, some folks might disagree with us. You know, that's part of it. We can have that debate in the public sphere, and the idea of a referendum is the voters get to decide. But I want to be clear that what we're proposing is a legitimate policy debate. It's one that a lot of people in this city and frankly across this country support, and we want it to be decided democratically in our city. So, you know, anyone who tries to sort of to suggest or imply that we're the ones discriminating by saying that anti-discrimination vote might be against what we're doing, frankly, I think is just trying to confuse and upset people to prevent our issue from going to a vote, possibly because those folks know just how many people support this initiative. But I look forward to voting on all of these referendums in May, and hopefully to seeing more direct democracy in our city in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Aparna Nigam.
My name is Aparna Nigam, and I live in Highland Park. As Ben said, direct democracy is a privilege. Looking around this room, about 100 years ago, more than half of us probably would not be welcomed into this forum such as this because of discrimination. Therefore, the overall intent of the ordinances introduced about a week ago, 1425 and 1426, are welcomed. Not only is the process an example of direct democracy, but furthermore, anti-discrimination efforts are applauded and in line very much with the efforts of Not on Our Dime, which I am a member of. Also, I encourage council to look at the details of the ordinance language and take into consideration the possible pitfalls, gaps, and repercussions of exclusion of certain protected classes and the definition of entities. I trust you've considered the unintended consequences beyond what was already originally introduced last week, and perhaps that's what led to the amendments to these two ordinances. I'd like to once again stress that this overall is a really great step for Pittsburgh democracy, and we want to encourage greater use of direct democracy whenever possible, as Ben, Eric, Addie, and Ken have already shared. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Eszuny. I apologize if I mispronounced the name. Eszuny. Okay, we'll move on to Calli DeSabato.
Hi, I'm Calli DeSabato, and I live in the North Side. I was a teacher in the Pittsburgh area for 10 years before I made the difficult decision to leave the classroom. Teaching is a remarkably challenging job, but I never would have left had I not experienced alarming rates of transphobic vitriol from a small number of parents. Honestly, I probably would not have left with even that. Really, I needed to leave the classroom because of the ways in which I was being asked by my superiors and administration to do things I could no longer be a party to. Here are some of the things that I was told. I cannot acknowledge the existence of trans people. I cannot correct a misgendering, although surprisingly, not surprisingly, I was allowed to correct any misgendering of a cisgendered person. For a pen pal letter-writing program that I conducted with my seventh-grade students, I was asked to make a list of all of the transgender non-binary students in the other class to ensure that no gender queer child from that school would be partnered with a student, a child, in my school whose parents didn't want them to be writing letters and exchanging them with a gender queer child. I needed to apologize to my class for a lesson in which we read a poem by a transgender poet who also was the youth poet laureate of Allegheny County at the time, and then I was not permitted to teach that lesson to the rest of my classes. And I was also told that I clearly didn't care about the well-being of children. Why am I sharing this anecdote here today? It's because I was really concerned about the initial absence of gender identity as one of the specified protected groups in council-proposed language. I didn't understand why the initial version added one new protected class and omitted a number of other ones, including gender identity. Councilwoman Strasburger was quoted in WESA saying that 1425 is a stronger way of cementing a nondiscrimination policy than just having it in our code. I'm grateful to see the revisions today, where the following groups have been added: ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, age, gender identity or expression, and place of birth. What I remain concerned about is the language in 105 that reads that the city won't discriminate against any person or entity. Equating a person and an entity on an equal level feels like dangerous territory to me, especially at a time when we're seeing such alarming and dehumanizing language at the federal level about personhood. When we're seeing rising fascism and increased hostility and violence against some of our most marginalized neighbors, it is even more important than ever that we band together to ensure all of our safety. I am grateful that our city council is concerned about discrimination and working to protect our neighbors. I hope that we can ensure the protection of all of our neighbors, especially in this alarming time at the federal level. I hope that the revisions I see today in this measure signal that it was indeed intended with a good face that I am indeed assuming today. My councilmember, Bobby Wilson, has been a vocal advocate in the past for the queer community, and I'm hoping that he will be a leader in revisiting the impact of some of this language here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next, our final registered speaker is Carmen Brown, who I believe is joining us online.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Good morning. I'm Carmen Brown. I live at 5516 Dean Street, that's in Liberty. I just wanted to touch a little bit on yesterday, meeting at the Planning Commission. It was very disturbing to me, and, you know, and it was very disturbing how very disrespectful that the commissioners, a lot of the commissioners were. And, I mean, I, you know, I don't never speak highly on or speak for councilmen or councilwomen, but I want to say this, I think what Bob Charlie, what Tom Charlie was saying, I think it, I understood what he was saying, I think it, you know, and I think probably lots of people because, you know, because of the being so long, but I understood where you were coming from, and you were coming from, you were coming with facts, but I just think it was just disturbing how disrespectful, and, I mean, so you understand when we get up here and talk, and how yesterday, you know, you worked for this inclusionary zone, you said anything against it, it was like you got cut off, you know, the commissioners told you to stick with the subject matter. I mean, it was just, it was just a really, it wasn't, it wasn't good at all. But I would say that, you know, something has to be done with this planning commission because this is always, because I've been at these meetings, they don't really care about facts, and I'm not saying all of them don't, but I'm just saying there are certain ones that don't care about the facts, and they just push these recommendations. And this is a legal, this is a legal government body, and, you know, and their recommendations and their actions are legal. So, you know, when they push these things, I mean, you know, they should, you know, know what the facts are before they start, you know, pushing these recommendations to city council. So I hope when city, I hope city council that you really look at this, you really pay attention and really taking consideration, you know, that the residents of city of Pittsburgh. And I'm very, very disappointed with Barbara Warwick, because Barbara, you were part of, you were very instrumental in pushing a lot of this negativity, so I just want to put that on the record, because I know I talked to some of the progressives, which I told me. But anyway, so again, like I said, it's that, you know, it was very disturbing yesterday. I think that, like I said, you know, for them to disrespect the councilwoman, the councilmen, and then also disrespect, you know, us as residents, never engaged with us, never notified us, and it was like they were very disrespectful just to the whole process. It was just wrong. And so I just never seen anything, I mean, I know that they do things that are not ethical, but that was just really in your face.
Thank you very much. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak.
I forgot my paper. Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. I was at your other meeting at the JCC, my home away from home, and it was outstanding. However, the flyer was too general. Should have had trigger warning. I did my training with the Center of Victims of Violent Crime decades ago. I'm old school. I would go into the homes of victims. We would booby-tap, booby-trap a balcony with Crisco, trust me, no one's climbing up that thing, cutting boards pivoted, nailed into a floor up against a door, fishing line with the old pole alarms going through an apartment building to a woman's side bed. So I have a passion of these sex crimes, but you should have warned people. Myself and about five other women spoke in private afterwards, and we were triggered. We were not prepared for the necessary sharing from the FBI on the details of these current sex crimes in our area, and that task force is fantastic. But for any future meetings like that, and from what I understand, the original flyer did say in big, bold letters, sex crimes, but it was said that it would upset women. Well, you upset women more by not warning us. Complex trauma with complex PTSD, we respond differently. It's not like just watching a really bad trauma event in a car accident. We have repeated histories of complex trauma, and so we respond differently when we hear things like that. Does that mean we, oh, don't talk about it? No, but give us a warning. There's things that we can do to prepare ourselves before we hear these topics. But I am very excited about this task force, and I'm glad to see the citywide meetings have readjourned. Now, very quickly, I would love to see a snowwalk of shame through the Arctic, alas, I can't, I can't find the unsubscribe button yet for the Alaskan frontier of Pittsburgh, but there are renters, there are the houses that we now own, the sidewalks that have been created for calming are not treated. I was screamed at riding my wheelchair, the only place that did not have ice and snow was in the middle, not beside, of the trolley tracks. We need to come up with a better, a better plan for this. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Any further speakers?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's in the Katy Irving Tires at the top of Hill, Bedford, that big tall building, 190 apartments in it. Yesterday, when I left, when I spoke, I was really upset, and I wanted to say to the citizens, I'm not apologizing to yous, because you caused some of this. I'm apologizing to the citizens for the way that I have acted. But as I talked to Ms. Strasburger, but first Ms. Strasburger, and I wanted to say to everybody that I give praise and honor to you, Ms. Strasburger, for speaking up for the people against what Donald Trump, our new orange president, is doing. I want you to understand that this, when we call the police enforcement to come up in the building because there's a bad actor that has beaten citizens with a hammer, mother and daughter with a hammer, she just beat a man in his head a couple weeks ago, he has cancer, he lives there at the apartment, she's not allowed, she's been banned since 2020. Now, I was upset because when she, well, Arbor came, the management came, my daughter spoke about, we've been there, the citizens are scared, and she tells the citizens, we can do a class action, do you understand? We are old, there's old, this, now, Dr. Miller don't like for me to talk about the older people, but I myself, in July, will be 79 years old, been living in that building 10 years, and chased around by this bad actor, and Mr. Coghill, you've seen it. What I'm complaining about is that we had our good mayor to come up in our building. Only one person in the building knew he was coming. He came, he brought a proclamation, you know, they give him out like water, but he also had a plaque for Salud Dean's brother, who's, you know, Dean used to be a congressman. He just moved, the brother just moved in the building. He cleaning up in front of August Wilson Building, not in front of ours. So I say to the mayor, I said, Mayor, right don't wrong nobody, I have a problem with what you did, and I'm trying to explain to him, and he gets, oh, you got a problem? I said, yeah, and August Wilson would have a problem with it too. He told me to come down and speak my truths, not yours. I want you to understand, we have in the building, because I asked to speak loud, and they have the room, that the one woman run, she said, no, and I said, what? I can't speak loud and make an announcement? When I questioned her, she said it wasn't the time or the place. I want you to understand that we have a room that this woman, the mayor, the mayor's campaign manager runs, and we can't speak loud in the room.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Special Agent Sunshine. Please excuse my voice. I return the sender of Revoodoo Death's Bell sent towards me daily, 100 million, billion, trillion, googoplex, and whoever ascended, Lord, throw them into a lake of fire, in Jesus' name, amen. Someone thought if they ran to California to escape the judgment of the Most High, they would live happily ever after, and nobody would ever know what they've done to me. Well, God hears my prayers, and it looks like fire to me. Do you not see it in California, that fire? You'd have to be blind not to see it. Thank you, Lord, for divine intervention. Psalm 46:9-10 says, "He makes wars cease to the ends of the earth; He breaks the bow and shatters the spear." Have y'all seen the hostages that were released last week? Did y'all see that? That was God. He says, "Be still and know that I am God. In my stillness I was guided here to speak in spirit and truth and to be a servant." Matthew 23:11 says, "Do you want to stand out? Then step down, be a servant." Thank you, Joel Allstein. How many of you have orchestrated a day to clean up the communities you serve, like pick up trash? pick up trash, uh, and supported those that live there with that day's pay? Crickets, tick tock. For all of you to do this is tick tock. I'm sure people have a list for what they need you to clean up in their neighborhoods, in those neighborhoods that you serve. I chose to be a servant and keep the counter clean at the Second Avenue Shelter daily with a smile. Justice Department, my real mother resides at this shelter. It's amazing. She's President of Vail's complexion, has long blonde extended hair, along with full demonic possession. What this demon spoke through her to me was confirmation I needed after praying for God to open my eyes and show me what I needed to see and hear. She still wants me dead and wants me to lose everything that I have. The whole time she was in my presence, she screamed, "You're dead, you're dead." Confirmation, I am. Twice on paper she killed me for insurance money. It's amazing. God, thank you so much for divine intervention. I will continue to pray for her healing. She needs it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, we will now move on to our standing committee agenda. And our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee. New papers, Bill fourteen oh seven.
Bill fourteen oh seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Mary Ann Stank and her attorneys, Ainsman Levine LLC, for a single payment in two thousand twenty-five in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen oh seven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, affirmative recommendation. Bill fourteen oh eight.
Bill fourteen oh eight, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Noel Phillips and her attorneys, Mills and Henry, Attorneys at Law, for a single payment in two thousand twenty-five in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas and for acquisition of the parcel identified as fifty-one sixty-six Broad Street.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen oh eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, affirmative recommendation. Bill fourteen oh nine.
Bill fourteen oh nine, resolution amending resolution five forty-seven of two thousand twenty-four, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Pittsburgh Futures for professional services relating to leadership development training by increasing the authorized spend by seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars for services in two thousand twenty-five for a new total cost not to exceed three hundred thirty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars over four years.
Motion to approve discussion.
With discussion second, okay, uh, Council.
Do we have anyone here to speak to the bill?
Chief Cornell is listed as our design name.
Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
I just wanted to get a brief on what this is.
Sure. So, um, this is a resolution, um, authorizing the continuance of our work with Pittsburgh Futures. Um, we have been up here several times before to talk about the progress that the administration has made to really change the thinking of how the city of Pittsburgh does its work and provides its services. Uh, the biggest thing that we have honed in on is, you know, we need to solve our problems to root, um, figure out why we're moving, um, you know, keep asking why. You know, sometimes the, the first answer isn't always the actual answer, so we need to figure out what the actual root cause of the problem is. Um, we have done a lot of work, particularly in Public Works with respect to employee safety. Um, and this just continues this through the next, the end of this year.
So I know there's a discussion for this type of stuff on the council side. Is this part of that or no?
So we have offered, um, the ability for council members and staff to sit in. We, uh, keep that offer on the table. Um, I think the last time there was scheduling conflict, it takes, you know, a good amount of dedicated time, um, even with an abbreviated session. So we are ready to, uh, to work with you to offer that again.
What is, um, uh, what's the source of the funding? Is this coming, is this already budgeted from the last?
This was approved in the budget. Um, this is in OMB's operating fund, professional services.
Yeah, I'm just, as time goes on and we don't have the funds, I'm just hesitant about continuing to spend funds for unknown benefit.
Uh, the benefit in this case is millions saved in workers' compensation claims in Public Works alone.
Yeah. Um, it'd be interesting to know more about that. Uh, knowing this speech, we heard that they got new boots and that's why, you know, workers' compensation was reduced. So I'm just curious on.
Sure. I mean, I can dig in more.
Some details on what this actually, what this actually means. Um, but you see my point, like, I appreciate you saying, like, you know, think about asking the why. I'm thinking like, I'd like to see more growth and, you know, possibly an effort to make sure that our city is, you know, on the map. So a real effort to get out there and, um, you know, have people travel the nation trying to track some business. So, I mean, I think that would probably gain, um, a lot of revenue as well. So I think we should be asking those questions. I think that, um, you know, it's important to, just to see, um, you know, although it's a small amount of money compared to, you know, millions of dollars we spend on other services, that, um, you know, we really just need to button up here. And, uh, if that means that we don't get training as well, that's fine, but I think we need to kind of rein in some of these, some of these, um, unknowns. But if there is a, a great, uh, one pager you can put together, um, that'd be great. So I'm going to motion to hold for one week so we can understand more about this.
We have a second on the hold?
Second.
All those in favor, discussion?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Warwick.
Oh, I just had, sorry, just a quick clarifying. So is this, are other, just because I know I've had some conversations with directors about process issues, you know, nothing formal, right? Is this, or, I mean, are, are these funds already allocated for specific departments at this point, or is there like room to sort of branch out and maybe do some other analyses?
Good question. So within Innovation Performance, there is an entire team working towards process improvement, our process improvement engineers. Um, the funds here, um, are available for, you know, really work across the city, um, kind of the bigger picture, and then it, it moves down to the frontline employees.
Okay, so, so if there's a director in another department and I don't want to, you know, that.
It's not just OMB in the mayor's office.
Okay, so they could, if they were like, you know what, there's whatever X process in my department that, yeah, I'd like to take a look at, they could access some of this.
Absolutely.
Okay, that, that's all, that's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Councilman Cahill.
Thank you. Patrick, you mentioned it would save millions of dollars in Public Works. Explain that.
So, I mean, we have, right? The idea is, um, if there is an injury or a near miss, you know, why did that happen in the first place? Um, it's, it's training our employees to be more responsive, more responsible, um, better stewards of their equipment, of their time. Um, and, and really what that turns into is people not getting injured, uh, employees not getting hurt. Um, you know, there is a, the real time, um, the safety system tracker. Um, I go in and I check every day, you know, what injuries have been reported and how, how do we know if there are ways to keep that from happening in the future? So it's not only, current employees are not getting injured, but they're not getting injured into the future as well. So we're kind of preventing things before they happen.
So, so we had this in place how long?
We've been working through this for three, four years at this point.
Okay, so we've never implemented this before? This will be the first time?
Through the, with Mayor Gaines' administration, yes.
Okay, so you expect that we'll save millions of dollars?
I mean, I, I know it has already, right? Like what we have seen.
You say it has already?
Is fewer claims in workers' compensation.
But the training hasn't started yet.
No, we have. This is ongoing work.
That's what I was asking you, since.
The first year was grant funded and then since then we've had.
So how many years is that?
This is your, this is the start of year four.
Year four, and you can show us significantly that since this training has started that compensation, um, you know.
The number of claims have decreased, yes.
Have decreased, yeah. Okay, interesting. By how much, do you know?
The dollar amount, I don't know. The number, I, I will dig into that.
You think it's directly related to the training?
I do because I don't think our employees thought this way about their work before we started this process.
I just think it's a stretch to say we have saved millions of dollars because of this training. I do. Whether the facts or whether, you know, your, um, reporting was through COVID, I guess, right?
Yes, but I don't think COVID impacted our Public Works employees being out on the streets picking up garbage or clearing streets or doing work.
Right. Okay, uh, that's it for me, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Charlin.
Uh, so I, I know we're, we're on like the motion to hold here, um, but one question I have about this organization, are we, is there a conflict of interest, form assigned? I know Director Norman is on the board there, um, and we're paying them, so is there, is there a conflict of interest, anything formalized?
I don't believe so, but I'd have to clarify.
Okay, is that something we can have, uh, next week when you come back to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to hold in a second. All those in favor of a one-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, bill will be held for one week. Thank you. Bill fourteen ten.
Bill fourteen ten, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to enter into a license agreement with the Pittsburgh Steelers LLC to allow for the use of the city's seal on official Steelers branded merchandise at zero cost to the city.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Second with discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Anyone here to speak to the bill?
We have Cameron Crowe. Oh, no, we have Dr. Gula.
I'm also here as the parliamentarian. I can speak if necessary.
Thank you.
Who is it?
This is Cameron Crowe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jen Gula. I'm the Director of Finance in the City Treasurer.
All right, thanks. So this, uh, this resolution says that, uh, you know, it can be, our, our symbol can be, our city's seal can be used, um, by way of the Steelers as well. And, uh, I guess I want to start by saying, well, I guess it's, uh, it's good that we're already black and gold on our seal. So it's a good matching.
It's good matching. So I think this is actually, and Cameron can confirm via online, but this is basically a throwback historical jersey that the Steelers is looking to reproduce and sell. And the original actually contained, it used actually the city's seal. So in order to be able to do that and sell it, they have to have our agreement so that they can license the apparel. So, and it means additional revenue for us. And either in the terms of licensing fees or a percentage of the cost, I'm not exactly sure, but I'm, I'm sure Cameron can elaborate if necessary.
I'm sure, something you'll be interested in.
Coming to a local retailer near you.
We all get a shirt.
So it's just one, one, um, jersey of some, from some era?
From an era, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure if it's just a jersey or if it's other apparel that would be throwback to that historical era that would actually contain. So it could be potentially other items.
So this isn't for the, the draft coming in? This isn't?
No, not necessarily.
Like some bigger, larger, okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. So we have Councilwoman Gross, followed by some other council members who I'll call on in order probably. I didn't see who raised their first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I am not an intellectual property rights attorney, um, or whatever that kind of, you know, attorney is called, right? But this, this does give me pause, um, that, you know, we, there's some like famous business deals that happen because of like loose contracts, right? And so I would want, um, more eyes on this. We very often, you know, if it's a small contract, I always say things like, you know, the face painters or, you know, small contracts with Parks and Rec. Council gives away the ability to review the contract by authorizing, uh, the administration to just kind of write a contract and we don't look at it. I would prefer we not do that here. Um, I don't like the, you know, I, I think we should be very cautious about giving away the use of the city's seal, um, which this is, right? Is there time limits? Are there product limits? Do we get approval before they use it? What if we don't like the way they've used it? What if they are making fun of the city? Not that they would, but what if they do, right? Um, what if it's somehow, you know, our citizens don't like it and they deem it inappropriate? What are, what are, what are our contractual options? Um, and so, again, we very often kind of almost too mu- I've always said too much, kind of in a perfunctory way, be like, yeah, go ahead and make a contract, um, without bringing it back to the table for approval. Um, and I do not think we should do that in this case, and I do see that that's the way this is worded. Um, I also, my first thought was like, okay, well, what's our, what's our share, right? I mean, again, I am not an attorney, but, right, there are, there are attorneys who do these very complicated, um, contracts for, you know, the entertainment industry, movie producers, et cetera, et cetera, right? And so what, uh, what is, what has the conversation been so far?
So I don't know if Cameron would like to elaborate on that part because I'm not an attorney.
And Cameron, I'm sorry, Cameron, sorry, Cameron, we need you to introduce yourself and give the public the title and your title. And in your comments, would you please kind of give me your background on intellectual property rights?
Please, and have a nice day.
My name's Cameron Crowe. I'm an assistant solicitor working in the city's law department. I have been discussing this deal with the Steelers off and on for probably approaching a year, not, not quite a year, maybe six months. Um, my experience, I have worked in securing trademarks for the city and done some previous license agreements. Um, from what I've seen, this is a very limited license. I already have the designs that they wish to use, which I'd be happy to share with you. Our share of the pro- of the revenue would be ten percent of the manufacturing costs, meaning if a sweatshirt takes thirty dollars to manufacture, we would get three dollars of every sweatshirt manufactured. That does not include the sale price that they sell for later. From what I've seen, that's a pretty standard agreement for this sort of thing. And to be clear, it's not for jerseys at all. It's mostly for like hooded sweatshirts, long sleeve t-shirts and a couple of hats, I believe. Um, the design just has the city's seal front and center, and they mostly say nineteen thirty-three on them when the Steelers were formed. Um, but as far as the agreement, you know, we haven't, obviously needed the approval before we negotiate all of the terms, but it is very limited. I believe it would be for just one year, um, limited to these specific designs and, uh, and that would be our cut. That's pretty much as far as I've gotten at this one.
Thank you. That does sound like you're going in the direction of, again, my very vague concerns because, again, I'm not an attorney, but, um, there's no like emergency here though either, right? And so I still would like kind of council maybe to have the option of, um, it's not that we are experts, but when we have, um, things in the public record, uh, we do get really good input from the public. So sometimes we make sure that contracts come back into the legislative record, um, so that everybody knows what's being, uh, approved. So those, those are my comments for now. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's, thank you.
I would be happy to share a draft with council. I can get something together that, you know, would not be the fully negotiated draft, but would show our current terms as I understand them. Um, you know, that's absolutely no problem. I don't think time is critical of the essence, but I know that, you know, they are obviously eager to get started and have some things printed and ready for next season, I believe. Um, so, you know, that's, the timeline is flexible.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kale Smith.
Thank you. I hate when I go after Councilwoman Gross. She brings up a lot of great points as usual, but, um, I am going to say, and it's, those are some of the things that she mentioned about us not seeing a contract are some of the reasons why I didn't want the, um, quad party, uh, agreement for the land bank to move forward until, because I wanted to make sure it came back to us. But that, our land is much more significant, you know, to me because it's going to affect everything, obviously. But I was excited when I heard about this, to be honest with you, because I think Pittsburgh Steelers and the city of Pittsburgh are synonymous. I mean, they, they are almost synonymous, I should say. And I think that there's a lot of people that would love to see and be supportive of those, and I think it's a great way to raise money for the city of Pittsburgh. My only question is, I remember when I worked for Pittsburgh Public Schools, I used to, I had shirts that said Pittsburgh Public Schools or Children of Our Future and had the Pittsburgh logo on, school logo. But they weren't allowed to benefit directly. It had to be through an organization that came to the city. So, and that was the sunshine laws back then. So I don't know, I'm just curious if before final vote or before we do anything, if we could just make sure that we're, we're good standing with that. I'm good. I just think this is great and I think it's a great opportunity and I can't wait to buy some shirts myself for my family. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Charlin.
Thank you. So I, I think some of my questions were answered by the solicitor here. But I just want to put a finer point in that. We, you said that you think that it's a one-year term on this licensing agreement. Is, is that correct?
Just give me one moment.
Okay. And so my question with that is, is it one-year agreement of they can create whatever design they want to over that one year? Or is it they have one year and they've already sent us three designs? These are what they're going to use for hoodies, t-shirts and hats or something? But they might provide something else?
It would be limited to the designs that they had shared, which I don't know. I have a, like a PowerPoint presentation that has some of those designs. I'm not sure at this point if those are the actual final exhibit that we're going to use, but it would be limited to some designs that we have placed in an exhibit in the agreement. They don't just have freedom to do anything that they want with the design.
Okay, that, that's a better, a more coherent way to answer what I, what I was asking. I appreciate that. And I, the, is it possible for counsel to see what those designs are before we do this agreement? Or is that something, I understand that, that although it's our intellectual property, there's also intellectual property from them as well that they may not be willing to share? Is that?
Um, no, I mean, from what I've seen, like I said, they gave me an example of what they're planning to do, and I don't think there'd be any problem with me sharing that with all of you. I will reach out to their attorney just to see if there's maybe an updated version or any changes that it made, but I can get that to you by tomorrow, I would expect.
Okay. I, I very much appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cockhill, followed by Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. So I feel very much like, I feel very much like Councilwoman Kale Smith does. I spoke to the Steelers organization on Monday, I believe, this week. And, you know, they said, should we be concerned? And I said, I don't think so. This has, this is no cost to the city of Pittsburgh. In fact, we will
Benefit.
Benefit. Three percent?
Ten percent.
Ten percent of the manufacturing cost, not the sales price, but the manufacturing cost.
Yes.
Yeah. And I would tell you that in my conversation, I was led to believe that this is kind of generated around the NFL draft. I can't imagine the t-shirts and hats and everything that they're going to sell. And I was, thank you, Cameron, for clearing up. I was under the impression it was to be on many things. Probably for a limited time, but that's the same. But really, this NFL draft is about marketing for the city of Pittsburgh. The Steelers want to put our emblem on their jerseys, which I think is fantastic. And the fact that we benefit financially is even better. So I'm in full support and I hope counsel will be too. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, first round, followed by Council President Lavelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Cameron. I'm just curious as far as this agreement, is it similar or was there an agreement made? And obviously, I, I would imagine that you weren't around then, but as, as, as a counsel person, Wilson joked that, you know, I'm a very avid sports fan, and I know that back in the 1990s, the Steelers actually had on-field jerseys that had the city's seal on it. I think they were from the 1930s or 1940s era. And I was just curious that when the Steelers actually wore on-field jerseys that had the city's seal, if there's any historical record of the agreement, potentially that the city may have made, you know, with the Steelers, to do it like, you know, a side-by-side comparison, you know, and give us some guidance of how the city, you know, over 30 years ago or around 30 years ago, may have negotiated, you know, with the Steelers. That may, you know, provide us, you know, with some guide, because this is not, you know, new territory. And I think the only difference is this is going to be non-on-field. And I actually just Googled, you can still go on eBay and get a Greg Lloyd 1996 jersey with the city's seal on it. So this is not, you know, we're not going into unventured, you know, territory with this. So I think there may be somewhere in, in the Law Department or in the historical records, you know, some guidance on how they arrived at those actual on-field worn jerseys that you could still get on eBay for a very hefty price, it appears. So that, that's just a question. You may not, you know, be able to answer that, but it also could just be, just a point of information for all those who are concerned.
No, I think that's a great point, and it's not something, you know, I've been here for two years, so it's not something that I was aware of, but I regularly like to look back at previous versions of contracts or things that we've done with companies that we're still working with. So I will look into that. I, I'm not sure if it'll be on open book or if I'll have to go into our, you know, our file room, but I will see if I can find something.
I can almost guarantee it won't be on open book.
Right.
It's so old.
Thank you. Council President Lavelle.
Councilman, sorry, Councilman Mosley actually brought up the point I was going to bring up. I just have a different question now, because as we were sitting here, I also looked that up. And those average hoodies sell for anywhere between $70 to $90 right now. So I'm just curious of, although we're getting 10% of the, the manufacturing fee, why are we not also trying to negotiate a percentage of the sale?
Um, you know, we were approached last year by the NFL and the Steelers together for a slightly larger deal that would have contemplated jerseys and on-field things, I think. And we had requested, I believe my first point was to request 25%. And at that point, the NFL bowed out completely and the Steelers did the same and told me they might regroup and come back to us. It took a number of months. They came back to me with this 10% of the manufacturing cost. From some, what I've seen, that's not a completely like unheard of arrangement. And I, I don't know what our bargaining power is on this, to be honest. I'm happy to, to try.
Sure, and I can appreciate that. I think it is worth, even if you ask for a lesser amount, asking for some percentage, even if it's 5% of the actual sale price, because of the extreme amount of revenue that they're going to generate, and given our financial outlook over the next two, next couple of years, it's worthwhile for us to push at every extent possible. So even if we're getting, obtaining 10% of the man, manufacturing fee, it may be worth asking for 5%, even if you have to negotiate down to 1% of the actual for sale cost. So I do think that'd be helpful for you to make that ask, at least.
Okay. I will report back when we get deeper into the negotiations.
With that, I believe my understanding so far is that members want to see copies of the design as well as the draft agreement that is currently in place, correct? Are you able to get us that information over the course of the next week?
Yeah, I will, I, like I said, I will reach out to their attorney and make sure there's no updates or changes I should be aware of, and I should be able to send it out tomorrow or Friday at the latest.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further first round? We have a second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Councilman Lavelle, for your questions. I was having the same thoughts, right? What if a t-shirt costs a dollar to manufacture, but they're selling it for $50? Was kind of the way I was thinking of the math. So we get $10 and the Steelers get $49.90. And, you know, that's fine, but we don't also have to let them like use our logo. I'm just not as excited about it. I think, I can hear the other members are. So, you know, that's, we just have kind of different first impressions here. So I would, I would definitely like to see a, a kind of, clearly it's not costing us anything, but it, it could be benefiting us more. So I appreciate it. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further comments for second round? So right now, the, there is a motion to approve. What's the pleasure of the members of the body?
I was going to motion to hold, because I would prefer this be rewritten so that it comes back to counsel. Not that we see the working draft, because that could be radically different from what is actually agreed upon. And I really think this is something that, again, there's more expertise in the public than there is at the table right now, with all due respect to the Law Department. So, and when we have, it's, it's, it's within our power to ratify a contract. So it's in the public record. For example, you know, we were just talking about the 1990s or maybe even if there's a 1934 contract. It wouldn't be in the legislative record. In fact, it may be nowhere for anyone to look at. And this one will be nowhere for anyone to look at. It won't be in the legislative record unless we bring it back to the table. And then the contract will be in the legislative record. So that's what I would advise. So I don't want to try to rewrite that as we're sitting here. So I would, I would offer a motion to hold one week.
Motion to hold one week. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Does any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a one-week hold for Bill fourteen-oh-nine, please indicate by saying aye. I'm sorry, fourteen-ten, fourteen-ten, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? One opposed? Zero abstentions? Bill will be held for one week. That moves us on to Bill fourteen-twenty-four.
Bill fourteen-twenty-four, resolution amending resolution number two-ninety-three of two thousand twenty-four, which authorized the mayor and the director of city planning to enter into a professional services agreement with Bromberg and Associates LLC for effective communication services by exercising the contract option to extend the term for one year and by increasing the total spend by $150,000 for a new, not to exceed $628,976.
Motion to approve? Discussion?
Second with discussion, Councilperson Charlin.
Yeah, is someone here to talk to us about this?
Good morning. I'm Anne Marie Ellison. I'm the manager of the mayor's office of equal protection.
And good morning, Felicity Williams, Deputy Chief of Staff.
So can you tell me about this contract? Sees $150,000 of planning. What is it for?
It is an extension for the use of ASL interpreters through Bromberg, which has been a contractor with the city since 2021. About a fifth of the contract extension amount would be allocated to the mayor's office for ASL interpretation. I think the remainder of the budget, so $120,000, would reside with counsel's use of interpreters.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I can clarify a point for, you mentioned the planning department. The position for ADA coordination used to be in the planning department. It is now part of the mayor's office of equal protection. And so that is, this is a legacy of that prior contract. And so that's why it says planning commission, but we will be going out to RFP this year, which is why it's only a one-year extension.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you for that, because that, that knowing that it's going to go out for RFP made me feel a little bit better.
Absolutely.
Welcome. All those in favor of Bill fourteen-twenty-four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Affirmative recommendation?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill fourteen-twenty-five.
Bill fourteen-twenty-five, ordinance directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the city of Pittsburgh at the 2025 May primary election a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article One Home Rule Powers definitions be supplemented by adding a new section 105 local governance by prohibiting the discrimination on the basis of race, religion, national origin or association or affiliation with any nation or foreign state in conducting business of the city?
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
Second with discussion, Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. I would, first, Councilwoman Schlossberger has an amendment on the table in front of us. I'd first like to make a motion to amend, and then I'm going to ask her to provide overview.
Second.
With discussion, sorry.
With discussion?
And I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you. Well, I'll first touch on the, on the amendment before you. As you can see, this more closely matches our existing code with regard to our nondiscrimination portion of our code that exists in many, actually many different portions of our code related to Commission on Human Relations and our explicit nondiscrimination. So when this comes to amending the Home Rule Charter, it was incredibly important. And I will just say, it was, it was an oversight, a big oversight, and glad it was brought to my attention that it was such a big oversight, because I would say that I, the number of ordinances and new protected classes that I've championed over the years will, will own that this was, this should have been included from many of these that I've championed in the past should have been included from the get-go. So I wanted to mention that, that that was the reason for the, the pretty obvious amendment that you have before you today. So I'm happy to dive into the rest of the bill. I want to, as the chair, though, I do want to open it up to members first for comment, and I can kind of add closing comments or comments in between first and second round. So is there further, is there discussion on the bill, on the, on the amendment or on the bill itself? Councilman Cockhill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when I look back at referendum questions, I always worry that people are confused, the wording of them. Has the wording been vetted out for us yet as to what that question will read on the ballot? I mean, word for word?
Are you asking if it's been reviewed by the Law Department?
No, I'm just asking if, if it's been completed as to what we would like to see on there.
What you read is what would appear on the, on the ballot.
Okay. Yeah, that's all, you know, again, I worry about confusion at the, at the polls, because there's a potential third question that's going to be on there too. And I think it's very important to, I, I think referendum questions have been misleading on purpose in the past, to be honest with you. So I want to make sure that our question is direct and people can understand it when they go into the voting booth. So that's just my concern. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for first round? Council President Lavelle.
I would just thank you for bringing forth the amendment to Councilman Cockhill's concern. I do believe this is as straightforward as possible. So I think it'll be very easy for the voters to understand what is being asked of them. So I want to thank you for the very direct and straightforward language that you provided.
Thank you. I do want to touch on a couple of different aspects of the bill. I know we're, we're discussing amendment, but rather than passing and talking about the amended version, I will touch on a couple of aspects of the bill along with the amendment. So I, I'll start by saying that this proposed referendum can stand on its own, certainly. And at the same time, this was introduced as, as a response to referendum, a proposed referendum that is being proposed by community members and where ballot initiatives are, or where, where community members are collecting petition signatures to place another amendment on the ballot. And the reason that this is, part of the reason that this, in addition to a partner bill that's being proposed that we'll consider next, is being introduced is because there are major, major concerns with, should that pass? Should it be upheld? With the direct impact on, on the city and our ability to do business. Should it be upheld with the direct impact on, on the city and our ability to do business? I'll touch on some of that when we discuss 1426. But I do want to say that when it's, when there's a question of whether this, whether the referendum that's being proposed by community members is in direct conflict with this, I will just say that the ballot initiative that's being proposed by Not on Our Dime, it only cites Israel. It doesn't cite, it does mention that there are other, actual language in front of me. So, "City departments shall ensure that the public monies are not being used to purchase goods or services from any company that does business with any government actively engaging in or facilitating genocide, ethnic cleansing, and apartheid." A laudable goal, to be sure. But the actual language of the referendum only cites Israel. What it doesn't cite is some of the other countries, not all, not a complete list, that could also be considered part of that category, that category. China, Russia, Sudan, Myanmar. So, I just wanted to point that out. I wanted to also say, just for the purposes of argument, that let's say that this only applied to Israel, let's just say, as it states in the language. There are grave concerns that I have that it would grind the city to a halt, that we would not be able to function as a city. And, and so, this is in direct response to that concern that if we have a prohibition discrimination on the basis of all these different protected classes and based on association or affiliation with any nation or foreign state in conducting business with a city that would protect us and allow us to be able to continue to do our jobs and keep the city functioning. But let's just say that we were only focusing on Israel or businesses that do business with Israel. For the sake of argument, forget China for a second. That list would include the following companies and probably more. Amazon, Apple, Caterpillar, Cisco, Citibank, Coca-Cola, Dell, General Electric, Google slash Alphabet, HP, IBM, Intel, G.P. Morgan Chase, McAfee, McDonald's, Micron, Microsoft, Monday.com, Nestle, Nvidia, Oracle, Pepsi, Qualcomm, Siemens, Tiva Pharmaceuticals, Toyota, Unilever, Volvo. How is the city able to run without any of these firms? It's basically impossible. So, I'll say more later, but I wanted to point out that this is in direct response to what I see as a threat to our ability as public servants to be able to fulfill the tasks that the public expects of us. I will leave that there for now. Counselmember Warwick.
Just one, just one quick point of clarification. Just is it that the language in the, no, I just pulled it up, says, "Financial policy divert funds from governments engaged in genocide and apartheid such as the state of Israel." So, I just wanted to clarify that. It doesn't say only the state of Israel, it just says such as. I just want to clarify that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further discussion? Counselmember, I'll get you second round. So, Counselmember Charlin.
I just want to thank you for your leadership here in making sure that we can still function as a city, that we, you know, as we've talked through some of the, the scenarios of what this actually would look like, it's like, would we, you know, would, would we have to have like IMP create computers for us? Like, like, the possibilities are so unthinkable. And you have been a great steward of making sure that we can continue to serve the public and that we're still able to deliver basic services here. And I just, just really appreciate the, the, you know, it's, it's a delicate walk here, but I appreciate that you've been able to make sure that we're legally compliant and legally still able to, to serve our residents. And just really thank you for that.
Counselmember Wilson, followed by Counselwoman Kelsmith.
I want to just say that this is the season for referendums as we are seeing here in front of us, the three of them. I want to thank Counselperson Strausberger for your, your leadership. I know that not only you put a great deal of thought into this, this referendum question, but also how you serve your community. And I know that your community's been through a lot. So, appreciate everything you do for your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselwoman Kelsmith.
So, I'm hesitant to talk because, you know, this is like something so passionate to me. I am Lebanese. I am, I have family in the Middle East right now. So, this is all so very hard a lot of times. But I want to just thank you because through all this, you have been a person who just cares about people in general, no matter where they're from, no matter who they are. You just care about people in general. And you and I have done things to bring people together. And so, I want to thank you for that because we've worked together on that with a lot of things. And we continue to work on that, including yesterday. So, I, I want to thank you for being a compassionate and caring person that I know you are, even though this is something that is, it's, it's really painful to watch, you know, across the board. But I have watched over the years divisions and things that we, that people, both Republicans and Democrats, do to divide this country and to divide the people. And I have not seen it benefit the people at all, ever. I mean, I just see the divisions just getting deeper and deeper. And nothing is really benefiting the people, you know, of, of the United States and definitely not of Pittsburgh. So, when I work with somebody like you who does want to bring people together, it's, it's really refreshing. And although I understand the need for this, I, I also can't help but feel passionate and concerned about people everywhere. So, I just, but I want to thank you for your leadership of always being willing to work together to bring people together. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further first round, second round, Counselman Cockhill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just really wanted to echo my colleagues' comments. You showed incredible leadership through this, and I was so glad that you put this forward. We are the fiscal watchdogs of the city of Pittsburgh. Set the politics aside. This is business. And there's many flaws in that referendum question that they're proposing. And again, it will grind us to a halt. So, I thank you for your leadership. I'm in full support. And good job.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending bill 1425?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Amendment is approved? Motion, we have a motion to approve the amended, the bill as amended?
Motion to approve.
A move.
Second.
Discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of bill 1425 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation on bill 1425, bill 1426?
Bill 1426, ordinance directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the city of Pittsburgh at the 2025 May primary election a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article I Home Rule Powers definitions be supplemented by adding a new section 104 amendments to charter by prohibiting the use of the Home Rule Charter amendment process to add duties or obligations beyond the lawful scope of the city's authority?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? So, I'll just take a moment to say a few more things about this one since I consider these somewhat companion bills. So, just to say that, as I mentioned before, I believe the city and city officials should be able to perform their basic duties without being asked to make impossible determinations about the conduct of foreign nations and every potential vendor's nexus to those nations. It would cause us to spend countless hours of valuable city staff time, or lawyers, people in finance, OMB, procurement, valuable time when they could be working on other things, trying to determine if a business relationship complies with fairly subjective regulations. And so, that is the goal. That is the goal, is keeping what I believe to be unenforceable amendments from taking up time and resources, both for city officials and county election staff. I will speak for myself. I respect, very, great respect. You might not hear it in my tone today, but, and through my actions, but I do respect the desire to keep taxpayer money from supporting human rights abuses. And I believe that these proposals that we've seen from the Not on Our Dime campaign have been fraught with what I consider ill-defined standards and unreasonably sweeping reaches. When I think about divesting, divestment campaigns from the north of Ireland, northern Ireland, apartheid South Africa, that was in direct coalition with the federal government's work and efforts. This is not. And it's my concern that we would be working beyond the scope of what is lawful for the city of Pittsburgh if we had to adhere to what was passed from that amendment in that referendum, if it were to go through, through and be upheld and be applied to the city. So, that is the reason for this bill. And I want to make sure that the Home Rule Charter or amendment process does not add obligations beyond the lawful scope of the city's authority. That is the goal here. I might have, you know, just speaking out of turn a little bit, there is a, a point I wanted to make in the last, on the last bill, and that is, this would, that bill would not run counter to any list of countries that we have active sanctions against, you know? If there's an active sanction against North Korea, we're not going to be doing business with them. That is in, in line with federal law and with state law as well. So, wanted to explain the purpose of this bill. I wanted to say that although we all have our own very strong and passionate opinions about international affairs, I don't believe it's the place for city governments to take action on international affairs. As strongly as we might feel, as much as we all have the opportunity to use the bully pulpit to convene communities, I feel that our responsibility lies here at home with the city, fiduciary responsibility, and our responsibility to, as Counselwoman Kelsmith alluded to, build connections and build peace here at home. And I hope that my, the intention, I hope that it's not taken as anything but that in the work that I'm doing today. And that, you know, the co-sponsors that I failed to mention, but co-sponsors who have joined us are, you know, I think all in favor of it as well. Thank you. Counselmember Warwick.
I just briefly wanted to bring up, we got this morning an email from Solicitor Kubiak about section 104 of the city of Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter. I just wanted to make sure that we had all seen that email and that it was synced up. Just interrogatory, is that, is that?
Yeah, I got it. Yeah, I got it.
Received, yes, received, it was my impression that that, that forced action on the other, the third referendum process.
No, because here this says, this says Article I Home Rule Powers definition supplemented by adding a new section 104 amendments to charter. And then here it says the absence, without, I mean, it's, it's a law, it's somewhat complicated. But it says the absence of section 104 impacts two bills presently before city council. I don't know if we have the solicitor here.
Yeah, do we have the solicitor here ready, or anyone from the Law Department ready to just speak to this? I apologize. It was my impression that we were, we were addressing the, the bill that actually is currently in 1452 to further align this. Is that not the case?
And that's. Wait, 1426? We're talking about 1426 now, right? Yes. That one also says adding a new section 104 amendments to charter.
The bill currently before us adds a new section 105.
Sorry, are we doing 1426 right now?
This is all moving very quickly this morning, but we have. Is there anyone who's here who can speak to this?
Yes, so 1425 is 104, 105. So, 1425 was 105, and this one is 104.
So. There, the recommendation would be to, if, if that's the desire of the body, move forward with all, with all of the bills today and fix it before final passage because of the, the lateness of the sort of opinion from the Law Department on the conflicting portions of the Home Rule Charter. Any further discussion? Yes, Counselwoman Gross.
I thought, I was actually focused on a different section of it. And I'm not sure if we'll need a lawyer to explain it to me either. The text reads that, and in, in section one, that if this amendment is voted on by, supported by the voters on the ballot, that it prohibits the use of the Home Rule Charter in the future to add duties or obligations beyond the lawful scope of the city's authority. And it repeats that in section, like in the, you know, section 104 amendments to charter. Non-binding agreements or amendments prescribing duties or obligations inconsistent or in conflict with the lawful powers or duties of the municipality are expressly prohibited. But because I was also working on a referendum in the last couple of weeks, I read the section of state statute that is like, what is Home Rule Charter? And why do, why, why is the state, do we allow people in Pennsylvania to go from, you know, being under a township or something like that to being on a Home Rule? And the city of Pittsburgh from going chartered by the state to being Home Rule? And in 1968, when they created it, it's actually in the whereas clauses in, in, in the next bill, it says the amendments were granted to municipalities for the first time to frame for themselves their powers and rights. And so, is this like a loop, right? Our, our Home Rule Charter does define our lawful powers and rights. So, would this amendment, if it was supported by the voters, then say, kind of like freeze what are the powers and rights instead of allowing them to change them into the future? I'm not understanding what's happening. So, I think it meant, and again, this may be something that can be addressed easily in amendments, beyond, is it beyond the scope of statute, like state law? Instead of beyond the scope of what we define for ourselves is maybe what the intent was. But it's not written as like, not superseding state. Because we only exist, the way it's been explained to us, right? We only exist within the scope of what the state allows us to. And then, so there's broad kind of boundaries within the statute for allowing Home Rule Charter, and we kind of define for ourselves. But we, we don't want to say that by, you know, this Home Rule Charter amendment. we don't want to say that by, you know, this Home Rule Charter amendment, that we're limiting our own self-defined powers or duties of the municipality. And so we shouldn't say that. So that's my pause here. And then I do think it is in the section that we will be dealing with, I think, in the future, which is that there is a mismatch between what is publicly posted as our Home Rule Charter and what actually, what we have in print in-house here. And that needs to be fixed. So that's, that's one of the fixes I think that may be more easy to fix. But I would like to hear also about that other section, right? Like which, which powers and duties are we kind of circumscribing into the future?
Thank you. Can certainly look at the intent versus language prior to next week. Any further first round before we move to second round? Councilman Mosley.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank you for reaching out to me, you know, earlier this week and giving me a briefing, you know, on all of this. And I honestly haven't really had a chance to wrap my head around it with all the issues we've been wrestling with in District 9, but I look forward over the next few days to take a deeper dive into this. And we've known since, you know, for the last, you know, year plus, this issue, you know, has, you know, you know, really been on the minds of people, not only here in this country, but all over the world. And, and my greatest, you know, you know, concern is, as we go into this political season, the possibility of, you know, creating, you know, a level of divisiveness that, you know, I hadn't, probably up to a couple of weeks ago, I thought that we may have, you know, turned the corner on, national politics notwithstanding, you know, and my hope would be that we could, you know, find some, you know, sort of platform to have some dialogue, you know, and bring folks together. And I do, you know, honor and respect the fact for folks to organize, for folks to participate in direct democracy, you know, and have their voices heard, you know, I think that's a hallmark, you know, of our society, you know, and what our country, you know, is supposed to be about. And for me personally, you know, this is a very, you know, difficult issue. I have, you know, folks who are very close to me, you know, on both sides of this issue, that I have, you know, very intimate, you know, conversations with, who rightfully, you know, feel very strongly. And I think if anyone, I think, you know, of sound mind, you know, is disturbed, you know, by the prosecution of the war currently, you know, and disturbed by, you know, the actions, you know, of Netanyahu, you know, but also, you know, understanding that he is not a proxy for the Jewish diaspora around the world, you know, or the Israeli people en masse. So I will continue, you know, to wrestle, you know, with this piece of, of these two pieces of legislation as well, between now and final vote on Monday, and definitely will be in communication with you, you know, throughout the next, you know, six days, as well as reaching out, you know, to folks I have a lot of, you know, love and respect for, you know, on both sides of this issue. And I would hope as a, as a city and as a community, at some point, you know, we can figure out a way to bring folks who are very passionate, you know, about this issue on both sides to come together, you know, and figure out, you know, how, you know, we can prevent, you know, you know, a really, really unfortunate and beyond unfortunate situation, you know, thousands of miles away from us that we have, you know, very little power to determine those events on that side of the world. You know, my hope is that, you know, it doesn't, you know, create further division and further divisiveness in our city, you know, as we try to bring, you know, our, our city together, you know, in a challenging time, and, you know, we're, you know, at a place where, you know, you know, we could, you know, really, you know, have long-term damage, you know, done to our city, and that's not to minimize, you know, the devastation that we see every day, you know, in Gaza. You know, so I just wanted to, you know, share the thoughts that I'm, that I'm wrestling with, that I have been wrestling with, you know, since October of 2023. And again, I hope at some point, you know, we can bring people together, you know, and also obviously bring peace and justice to people in the Middle East and around the world, and some of the other places that you mentioned. So I'm going to continue to wrestle with this over the next couple of days, but I will be in contact with you as I have questions and with other folks on both sides who feel very passionate about this issue. But thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilman. Second round, Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, so I know I said I wasn't going to say anything, it's hard. So I just, but and this may need to be an interrogatory. So just as, just to sort of, just so I'm clear on what Councilwoman Gross is, so if we were to amend hypothetically to say, you know, add duties or obligations beyond the lawful scope of the city's authority as laid out by state and federal law, is that?
That's what I was imagining.
Is, okay.
But we're not doing it.
No, no, I just, just for me to understand. And then, but just with that, it just kind of in this environment that we are in at the federal level, I'll say, to put it delicately, like what could become illegal under federal law concerns me outside of the scope of this conversation, which I will save my comments for that for the public hearings, right? When it comes to this, you know, like, we're in a, yeah, sort of what could become illegal under federal law could become somewhat disturbing and certainly antithetical to the previous amendment of like nondiscrimination. And I hesitate kind of preemptively to limit our powers here in Pittsburgh, and more specifically, the power of the residents of the people in Pittsburgh to sort of, you know, decide what we want to do here as a city in our own Home Rule Charter. So that, and again, this is all sort of come, just in this conversation right now, sort of in a way that I hadn't really thought about before, just, you know, state law, well, I mean, state law could be concerning too, that's a pretty fine balance too, at this point, you know, but certainly federal law. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, second round? I'll, I'll just say, not to negate what you just said, but I just want to point out that this would not prevent City Council for passing any ordinance that we want, any bill that we want. But I do hear what you're saying. We could still pass our own bills, which are arguably less powerful and strong as than amending the Home Rule Charter, but that would, nothing would prevent us from continuing to pass any ordinances that we need to, to protect our city. And I understand what you're saying. Okay. We'll take a vote on the bill. All those in favor of Bill 1426, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to abstain, yeah.
Three abstentions, affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to, actually, it was noted to me that Bill 1452 was intended to be put into this, the Finance and Law Committee, so we will now move on to Bill 1452, which is currently in Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross, but we will be moving that up to and taking it now as Finance and Law. Bill 1452.
Bill 1452, ordinance entitled directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified voters of the city of Pittsburgh at the 2025 May primary election a referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article 1 Home Rule Powers definitions be amended and supplemented by adding new Section 104 G5 to restrict the lease and/or sale of the city's water and sewer system to private entities?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And members, you all also have a yellow amendment in front of you on this bill. It's an amendment by substitution. So I think I'll start there, and motion to amend by substitution.
Second.
Discussion?
So the amendment, if I may?
Yes.
The amendment addresses a similar problem that we had with the last bill, which I cannot remember, 1426, I think, well, not sure. That was in a section of the Home Rule Charter where there's just some confusion about. So members will remember that citizens circulated a petition in, gosh, I've forgotten what year now, not too long ago, to amend the Home Rule Charter to add the Parks Trust Fund section as a new article, and that was Article 9. And then there was a, also, I think in 2021, a petition circulated around policing powers, and that became Article 10, what we usually call it now, and that was supported by voters and was placed into our Home Rule Charter as Article 10, and it's, I think, called policing powers, but it's what we usually think of as no-knock warrant. And so similarly, this just creates Article 11, and it is very similar to one that was done recently in Pennsylvania in another Home Rule municipality. So with that, that's, that's the explanation on the amendment.
Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending Bill 1452, amending my substitution, Bill 1452, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. May I continue discussion?
Councilmember Gross.
Thank you. And I also want to acknowledge that there are five co-sponsors, so it's a total of six members sponsoring this bill, so I just want to thank everybody at the table. This is language that will protect the public asset that is PWSA currently owned by the city and leased by PWSA, right? And so that protects the public ownership moving forward. Again, there's precedent in Pennsylvania recently, and a township, a Home Rule municipality in Pennsylvania had a very similar ballot amendment, amended their Home Rule Charter, and prevented the sale of their water system over the voter's wishes to a private corporation. I believe in this fight, we've been having these discussions very actively, not everybody agrees, for many years now at this table. But I really learned here on the job as a council member, the power of having citizens own this system when there was suddenly billing problems. It was the women on council, give Councilwoman Darlene Harris especially a shout out for doing the first post-agenda that I recall, sitting down across the table at Viola at this table over lead, was it yours?
It was me.
Was it yours? Thank you, Councilwoman Smith. I deep apologies to Councilwoman Teresa Kayla Smith for her leadership on really using the power of this table and the power of the people to call into question the private corporation that had leased, was leased our water system back in 2012, and exposing the billing problems. Do you remember the kind of, the billing, like the piece of machine that was put on the table here by the Viola's employee, saying that there was no problem with the bills, and yet our citizens were flooding our city council offices by the thousands complaining about outrageously inaccurate water bills? And, and so on and so on. And so, and, and we are now, I think, because of the work of this council, with the PWSA board over the years, are now seen as leaders in the nation by the EPA. We fought here at this table to replace the lead water service lines before many cities. Shout out to Councilman Kahari Mosley's partner, now County, Judge Chelsa Wagner, because she came here testimony to tell us that some cities were replacing their lead lines. And, and we were able to effectuate that. So, and I give the power of the people a lot of the credit for that. So thank you to the members. I don't know if anyone has anything else to add.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kayla Smith.
Thank you. I do want to say that it was the Women's Caucus back, not only did we discover that there were problems with the billing and problems with the meters, but we also just uncovered during that post, during our first, we had two post-agendas and public hearing. And during one of those, we found, post-agenda, we found out that there was lead in the water. And so that was some of the, and it was, Councilwoman Gross, I'm going to be honest with you, you were one of the people that said, let's, let's pursue it, and let's, let's, you know, go forward with it. But some of them were a little bit hesitant. But through that, we found out, you know, the astronomical, you know, the astronomical bills that people were getting, were paying. But the thing that bothers me is, over the years, I really fought hard to make sure we fought for PWSA, really hard, because I wanted to make sure it stayed public, I wanted to make sure people were protected. Some of my district has different water. I have three different water companies serving my district. I have PA American, I have PWSA, and I have Westview Water, and a, and a small portion. And so I watch, you know, some of the bills being paid. Right now, I am so disgusted at seeing how our residents are being, every time they go before the PUC, all these utilities are always getting their rate increases approved. And I mean, we're supposed to be protecting them and their bills, and I, I just, the bills are getting, people cannot afford the utilities. I have people living in, you know, we built affordable housing in Ferrywood, and some of it's affordable, it's mixed income. But we have people paying $400 to live there, but their utility bills are $600. I mean, this is just not okay. We need to really start looking into all these utilities, and we need to, you know, talk to the PUC and see if, I don't know that this governor has any appointees on it, but I know that the previous governor had appointed the PUC members. I think we need to look into their membership, when they're expired, how long their terms are, and whether or not this governor intends on putting people on there. And if so, you know, that we're advocating for people, they're going to advocate for the people, because these bills are, I mean, I want to see the benefit of us keeping the, keeping the utility, you know, public, because I think that there could be, but that would be our leverage. Because right now, everybody's under the PUC, and that was one of the things that came out of all the things that were going on, is that they weren't initially under the PUC, but now they are. So, and I think that was a Senator, or that was a, no, it was a state representative, yeah, was it, I thought it was Harry Rechel. One of them put it that is, that the PUC, that the PWSA now goes under the PUC. And so I think we need to have a conversation about that, because if we're going to do anything to protect the people, we have to have that authority to actually help them when their utilities are going through the roof. I mean, between electric, you know, the water and, and all the things, I, I just feel so bad for people, because they just can't afford to live, just period. I mean, and then the stress of not being able to pay those bills, and we're worried about food insecurity, they're not even, they're not going to have anything. So there's a lot to worry about. And I just feel like this is one of those things that's, that could be more in our control, what we should be at least drawing more attention to. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson, I believe was next, followed by Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the primary bill sponsor. I appreciate the, the effort here. The, I had a couple of questions whenever this was presented to me, and so if you would allow it, interrogatory, I just want to ask.
Interrogatory.
And so one was just, you know, since you're on the board, I wanted just to know, is there any conversation right now that the, that the authority is looking at to privatize the water?
No.
Okay, so this is added protection, so gone are the days if we pass this, where another mayor or candidate can accuse the other mayor or candidate of privatizing the water. If we continue doing things, we'll just have like no, no political discussion, I guess. But anyway, sorry, bad joke. Yeah, I look at this, I'm like, well, let's do this with the Park Authority then. Remember, there were days when Park Authority was going to be sold, and now look at it. So, you know, maybe that's something to look at, because obviously, once we're put in a position that we have to, you know, realize that, that we're ultimately responsible for the entity that, you know, because my understanding, and the other question I had was, if, if this, and I guess we have our solicitor here, but if all, if everything fails at the Water Authority, my question is, then who's responsible? Is the city on the hook to pay the bills at the Water Authority?
Interrogatory with, if there's an answer with, among...
Do you know of an answer? Or solicitor? Would you be a good, I'm just like, you know, we have, the state can, you know, take us under, you know, their own action to make sure that we're cutting our budget, you know, in the days of, what's the number, Act?
Act 47.
Act 47?
The Christian Kubiak.
What happens, yeah.
So the PWSA is its own separate corporation at this point, and they are under the jurisdiction of the PUC. So the PUC can do a lot of things if they get to the point where they are completely out of balance. That would be governed by the Municipal Authorities Act, because they are an authority of the city. So... um, Authorities Act, because they are an authority of the city. So, um, I'll also say, we're in the negotiations for, between the PWSA and, um, the city of Pittsburgh, and we don't, we're not done yet, but on the negotiations on the sale of all of the assets. So, some of those issues will come up during the course of that as well.
Yeah. They carry a lot of debt, that's why I'm just wondering what.
Pardon me?
They carry a lot of debt, and obviously.
They do carry a lot of debt.
They came here during the, the finances, the, you know, the budget hearings, and they look like they're on a healthy path, but, you know, just.
Yeah.
Really just want to know, like, are we the ultimate person, or are they, since they fall under the Municipal, um, Authorities Act, that means that the state would step in and then say, look, here, you gotta cut this budget here, you gotta raise rates, what happens?
I, I think even as, and again, I haven't looked at this specifically, but even as their own corporation, they can potentially file for bankruptcy, um, and, you know, but that again, is all governed by the Municipal Authorities Act. So, it is automatically that the city is on the hook for everything. Um, there are lots of steps that will have to take place for that.
Thank you for coming to the table.
Sure. Thank you.
Not sure if you may need it again. Appreciate it. Uh, no further questions, but happy to support this effort. Um, hopefully I didn't cause all the commotion on the other end of the table.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, uh, thank, uh, Councilwoman Gross, uh, for taking the leadership on this, as well as, uh, the many stakeholders and organizers, um, who have really been lifting this issue up, um, for the last several months and putting it, um, on, on my radar. As, uh, Councilwoman Gross alluded to, that, uh, when my wife was the, uh, the county comptroller, um, you know, she did a lot of work on this, and I, I think if I did not, um, co-sponsor this bill, I would have a hard time, uh, you know, walking into my house, uh, when I, when I get home, when I, when I get home from work today, uh, you know, so that's one of the, the many reasons why, you know, I'm in support of this, you know, obviously, you know, at, at, at a scientific level, um, you know, you know, water, you know, is, is the reason, you know, why, why we're all here, you know, water is, um, you know, we're, uh, very much made of water ourselves, and our planet, you know, is, is three-quarters water. And so I think that, you know, to ensure that, that people have access, um, you know, to good drinking water, um, and, and water in general, you know, I do believe is, is a human right, and something that just maintains, you know, human life, um, period. Um, so I think that's, that's something we can never, um, you know, overlook, um, the importance, you know, of, of water. And I think, looking forward, you know, as, I know tomorrow, um, is the big launch of, uh, the Comprehensive Plan, and looking at 2050, as we start to look into the future, um, you know, we do know that, you know, and as climate change and extreme weather, uh, you know, gets, gets worse and worse, um, you know, our, our, our water systems are gonna become, you know, that much more important and that much more critical. So, to ensure that, you know, it remains in the public trust, you know, as we, you know, can anticipate over the next twenty-five to fifty years, um, you know, folks moving from coasts, folks moving from places that lack water, not only in this country and around the world, um, I think it's gonna be that much more important to ensure that water systems are in the public trust, because, um, as water becomes more scarce over the next century, um, those being in private hands, you know, I think, um, you know, is, is, is a truly a threat, um, on, on a, on a whole variety level. So, I appreciate those, um, who are thinking ahead, and obviously thinking about, um, folks today, but also thinking about, um, the folks that have yet to be born, um, and, and protecting them as well, and ensuring that, um, future generations of Pittsburghers will have access, um, to water that's held in the public trust. So, uh, thank you, Councilwoman Gross, and all the cosponsors.
Thank you. Any further first round? I also wanted to echo that. I wanted to commend Councilwoman Gross for her leadership here, all cosponsors. Um, to be honest, I mean, environmental justice is what, is what politicized me, like, twenty years ago, when I first started in politics, and is what animates me today. And so I'm, you know, hugely in support of this, um, and I think that keeping our water public in a public control is a big part of, um, the environmental justice movement. And what we've seen time and time again is private water companies claiming to invest in infrastructure, or using technology to save money, but really, it's inflict, it's, it's interests conflict with the public good, yielding disastrous results, as we've seen a touch of here in Pittsburgh. Higher water rates, failure to repair, or expand infrastructure, sometimes labor abuses, sometimes decreased public control over water systems. And so, um, I am hugely in support of this. I'm grateful to the advocates, and the organizers, and the, um, fellow council members who support it. And I would also say that, as a council member who also sits on the Pittsburgh Water Board, I wanted to underscore that Pittsburgh Water, which is the new name of PWSA, so Pittsburgh Water, supports this. They have no intention of going private anytime soon, and they support this as well, to underscore their commitment to keeping the water public. And what I, I hope we can all do as a, a, a region and a city where we have a, a water authority that has really turned the corner in the last ten years, is to help, um, uh, share the lessons learned with other smaller and maybe weaker water authorities across the region, across the state, that are more susceptible to really pernicious state laws that are fully intended to, to take over water authorities, um, through private acquisition. So, that's my hope into the future. This amends it here, that we can move this to other places around the city, uh, around the region. So, thank you, Councilwoman Gross. Any further discussion, second round? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen fifty-two, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, affirmative recommendation. All right, that moves us on to invoices.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. Uh, I just have a question about one of the invoices, and I, I think this has come up before. Um, the police chief annual dues are listed as one of the invoices here, and, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't think we're ready to have the discussion yet of, um, if Chief Ragland is, is going to be the permanent chief, but i, if he's not, does this membership transfer to someone else if that were to happen? Is anyone able to answer that?
I'm not able to answer, but I believe so. I mean, it's a chief's, doesn't signal out the name.
Well, it, I guess it would be helpful, helpful to know that. Um, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't waste our money.
Yeah. I mean, not a ton of money, but it's enough money, so, um. All right, yeah, I don't know what to, what to do with that, but.
Councilmember Warwick.
I mean, well, I guess we don't, because we don't have someone to speak to it, but like, yeah, it says annual dues for Chief Ragland, but is it, right, is his name associated, or are we just like, this is the city of Pittsburgh's membership?
Right.
Right. Got it.
You're welcome to amend, you're welcome to propose an amendment, or you're welcome to, um, abstain or oppose.
Yeah.
Your choice. I'm not the one to answer that, I don't know.
Uh, can we? Can I make a motion to strike this until we get more information next week?
Second discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment to invoices, striking P A Chiefs' Police Association annual dues for Chief Ragland, $12,050, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, striking it. The line item will be struck. Any further discussion on invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P cards. We have motion on P cards.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee, chaired by Councilman Coghill.
New papers, Bill fourteen twenty-three, resolution amending and supplementing the rules of council by adding Rule thirteen, hearings for appointments of heads of administrative units.
Motion to, for a discussion.
Yeah, motion approved.
Motion to approve for brief discussion.
Second.
Good discussion, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Two. So, I apologize, first of all, I really haven't talked to any other members about this personally, um, but it's pretty cut and dry, and I'll explain why I introduced this last week. It's really to protect taxpayer dollars, as is our obligation. In my opinion, we hired, I voted for Chief Scarrato under false pretenses. Had he indicated to me that he wanted to go back to college Big Ten refereeing basketball, I would not have, um, approved his hiring. There was a million-dollar mistake to have private conversation with the chief, and then putting him in front of us, and us approving him, while asking him that question and him denying it. So, this is to protect this council, whether it's this mayor, or mayors in the future. Um, it's not to embarrass him, it's not to put him on the spot, but it's to give us the recourse to go back and deny them their pension. And again, this costs us roughly, if God willing, Chief Scarrato lives to be average life expectancy, it's gonna be over a million dollars to our pension fund. Um, so, I want, when these people that we're directors, all of them, that we're appointing, I want them to be on public notice, because they're speaking more than just us, they're speaking to the city of Pittsburgh. Um, again, we, in my opinion, we hired him under false pretenses. I feel that the administration probably should have denied the, um, added benefits, but being that the mayor lived up to his word, um, you know, they didn't do that, and that's fine, but I don't want it to happen again in the future. That's it, um, I mean.
Yeah, so just questions for the sponsors. So, and, so, this is more just like a procedural question. So, anybody who comes to the table would like take an oath when they come to the table, like, what is, what is the, I mean.
That's right.
Yeah, how does it work? That, yeah.
Like directors, people that we have to approve or appoint. Um, the mayor puts them in front of us, of course. So, any director of any department, and I just didn't want to single out the police department.
Sure.
I don't suspect, I don't have any, I'm not, didn't introduce this to put people on the spot, or anything of that nature, but just so we have the recourse. Um, if there are, again, whether it's this mayor or future mayors, conversations that they have in private, when they're in front of us, I want it to be on record, and I want them to be under oath. So, we have the recourse to go back and deny them their pension. You know, many people, I will say, told me, oh, you know, he's just after, you know, a bump in his pension, that's why he's coming back to the city of Pittsburgh. I didn't want to believe it. You know, we sat here, we talked to the, the former chief, and, you know, seemed like a nice guy, and, you know, I, I didn't want to believe somebody. But, but I, I will tell you, my opinion has changed on that. So, this will just simply give us the recourse, any director that they put in front of us, and if we hire them, or appoint them, or approve them under false pretenses, we will now have the recourse to go back, as we didn't have with Scarrato, it cost us a million dollars, to go back and deny them their, their, uh, additional pension bump.
Okay, so they would just take an oath?
Yeah, and that could be administered by as simple as a notary, or one of our district judges. The clerk could do it? I, I, I don't know. You know, I, I haven't thought, I wanted to see, make sure it passed.
Yeah.
But then, yeah, obviously, we'll have somebody here that day, whether it be the clerk, whether it be a notary. You are a notary. Clarks are notary. Our clerk is a notary, Kim. No? I know we have a notary in this.
We do have a notary at HR, down at HR.
So, so at any rate, yeah, it's as simple as a notary, putting them under oath, and, um, you know, again, having the, being able to have the ability, the recourse to go back and reexamine it and say, well, you know what, uh, taxpayer, taxpayers were fooled in this instance, I feel. And, uh, again, it's a million-dollar mistake, and I don't want it to happen again, at least not within my committee, so.
Okay. Yeah, that was all. I just was curious.
It's a long day. Um, thank you. I, um, I know that I have voted on changes to the rules of council before, but usually there's like a working committee or something. And so are there no other changes? Because I, I, to be honest, we had a lot of text filed to read, and I did not read to make sure there weren't any other changes or additions or anything like that in the text file.
Interrogatory? I, I would, I would say, I was considering secondary employment got kind of complicated, and, um, would require legal reviews. Um, but that was the only other thing I was considering and decided, just to put the oath portion in.
And, um, you know, I saw it on the agenda also, but I hadn't really thought through all of these things before today. Usually I do a little more preparation on, on the other bills, that, you know, and this is an important one, and, um, it does sound like we just need to work out maybe what, like, what would the oath, what is the oath? Um, and sometimes we bring directors to the table, kind of like, on the fly, right? And so, does that, yeah, so who wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't really want to like hire someone new, to just be there, the oath giver, keeper, whatever, taker, whatever that is, right? And so, yeah, I think we need to, to work out a little bit of logistics. I'm totally happy to entertain this. We would hope, as you said, that, you know, it's just additional, this is like superfluous in a way, right? This is just, of course, people take their obligation to the city very carefully, and their testimony to the public, which is what it is when they're here at the table, very seriously. Um, and I'm sure that that is true. Um, but I, I, I'm happy to entertain this. We, we have really, I've had discussions, um, with some members of the public, um, and, uh, we didn't move it forward, but it may, I'm not sure if it would belong in the rules, but I'd love to talk to you about it, of like, uh, we haven't, you know, we take the oath of, an oath of office. Um, but we have a lot of boards and commissions, where the commissioners have a great deal of power, and perhaps we should be asking those citizens, they're not elected people, most of them, um, to also take an oath to, you know, the people of the city of Pittsburgh for the service that, you know, for their kind of, you know, public service that they're doing. Um, but then what would that oath be, and how would that be implemented to? So, you know, I, I'm, I'm supportive of the, the notion. I wonder if we want to just kind of like, hold, just, you know, just for we can just kind of think through if there's anything else that needs to be added or tweaked.
I want to make sure.
Because I know it's gonna, it's gonna be a busy week, so I like to, I would say, like, normally, it's something like this, we can just be like, oh, we'll work it out on Tuesday, but we have a lot of other things that we're gonna Tuesday, and I think we're gonna have, thank you to the, all the members who've, um, voted for public hearings. We have like three public hearings on three referendums, I think, also coming up, so. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
We did have a, we did have another comment, and then we'll return it to you, Councilman.
Just real briefly, I just wanted to make sure, this is just for appointments, correct?
No, it's like every time.
It's every time they come to the table.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So, that, my only concern is that, I, I don't disagree that we should do it for appointments. I kind of disagree with, but, but what I, I, what I don't want to do, Councilman Coghill, is I want to make sure that we're not doing this every single time a director comes to the table. I mean, i, if you needed it or something, you did it as, you know, you need it, you could do, call for it that day or something, I think. I don't want, I won't want to, first of all, I think our directors have enough stress, enough, you know, and, and they do get misinformation sometimes, and sometimes they come to the table with wrong information.
Right.
But they clarify it later, or something like, or, you know, so I, and I think we have some amazing people, so I'd hate to make it look like we just distrust them so much because of one person and one agenda who came in here and did something wrong. And I'd hate to see it missed used down the road for people that have, uh, I mean, you, I was here when council members have berated directors, and they think I'm tough. I, I'm so kind to compare to what I've witnessed over the years. Ashley, I'm sure you remember some of them. But, um, so I, I don't know, I'm a little bit hesitant, like, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I want to support you, and I want to support what you're saying. I just want to make sure it's just for appointments and not, um.
For just interviews?
And not something.
Or, and interviews.
So, can you tell me, is it just for?
Interrogatory.
What, your attention?
Okay, okay. So, the, the idea of this is, so we have recourse to people who are, benefiting from taxpayer dollars. When Councilwoman Gross talks about commissioners and things of that nature, you know, anybody who's not on the payroll, or is not benefiting financially from the city of Pittsburgh, uh, whether it be a bump in their pension, or otherwise, then, no, I, I, I would not exclude. I, I, I would not exclude them. I would certainly entertain the thought, and, and if I could, I was just trying to be fair across departments, but, and never did I think I would be introducing something where I feel like we would have to put somebody under oath. But, we can anticipate that. I never anticipated that would have happened through last year with Chief Scarrato. And, again, it costs us a million dollars, a million dollars. So, you know, if, maybe if it's, if we can go back and look and make it the prerogative of council to put people under oath, with whoever we're interviewing, I would be open to that. I just feel like, you know, as far as the legalese goes, that we just put everybody under oath and let them speak their mind, and I know they don't have anything to hide, so. Say that again?
I thought we had that option now, currently.
I don't know.
I knew we could subpoena people, but I wasn't sure about everything. Sean, do you know? Do we have that authority now? I'm sorry, do you mind if I ask? I just wondered, do we have the authority now to say we want somebody to take the oath before?
Interview.
So, we have that now?
It requires a public hearing. It can only be done in a public hearing.
Okay.
Section 808 of the Charter gives council the power to do that, and its presiding officer to administer the oaths, but it has to be done in a hearing.
Okay. Okay, but I do want to, I do, I do know Councilman Coghill was trying to make sure that we're looking out for the taxpayer money, and people are angry, they want some solution, they want some response from council. And so, I do appreciate that you're, you're trying to give some response here. And I'm gonna support whatever you decide, but I just, I want to make sure we put that out there. Maybe some things we could tweak before the end of next week, or before the final vote next week.
We had a comment from Councilmember Sharland and Councilmember Warwick. Councilmember Sharland?
Yeah, just, uh, just to clarify for everyone, as this bill is written, it is, it is just the interviews, appointment interviews.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
Right, so it is, it is not every time a director comes to the table, or the chief, or anyone else. I, I mean, to be fair, I, I actually would be supportive of, of allowing us to have more of an option to put members from the administration under oath.
You do have that.
That would be beneficial, but this legislation here is just appointments for administrative heads, so, just to be clear on that.
Correct.
Okay, that makes it easier for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, I just, well, yes. Yeah, so there were two, two things, sort of like, what, what our recourse would be, right? So, let's just say hypothetically, right? We had, we had put Larry Scarrato under oath, and he had said this, but then it turned out that, you know, he actually did that. You know, what would our recourse be? I assume, I mean, in that, we don't, we don't know that, right? So, that would maybe be just like, if, if we decided to pursue legal action, or, but, I, I do, just because it is, and, and they're always, you know, this is something in, um... You know, when you have one person who did something wrong to then like recreate the whole process because one person screwed up, as opposed to just saying this one person did, you know? Um, I just do wonder, just for, you know, down the road, I mean, again, say there's a director who comes and, and is like, and, and has some kind of pension, or in, like, a similar situation, right? Like, has some kind of like a pension program, I don't know what, and says at the table, "Yes, I intend to be at the city of Pittsburgh for a long time to come," and then their spouse gets another job somewhere, and they have to, you know, and some, like, some kind of personal thing comes up and something changes. I don't know, it just, it's, it's a little vague.
Yes.
So, I guess that comes into kind of the recourse and, and what, I, I don't know, I would just hate to see us, like, someone comes and serves the city and then leaves the city, which is the scenario that we're speaking to in this specific example, leaves the city, and then we kind of deny them some compensation. I, I don't know, it's just, I'll leave it at that.
We can move on to second round.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Okay, thank you. Uh, to, to your question, first of all, if, I don't, I don't anticipate this ever coming up again. I really do not, right? I know our directors, they don't have anything to hide, you know? The rumors I heard about Scarrato were troubling after what happened, I heard, I just couldn't believe it. But, for instance, if it came up, and again, I don't anticipate it ever will, but if it did, we are protected, the city taxpayers are protected. And then we would call our solicitor, Chrissy Akubiak, if we felt we had a legitimate reason to deny or, you know, pursue legal action against said, whether it be director or police chief, or you name it. And then, and then it's a, then it's with the court, and, you know, then we are trying to get our benefits back, so it doesn't cost us another million dollars. And, um, yeah, so, so it would just, it just allows us to have the recourse in case anything as crazy as that happened, happens again. It's really, quite frankly, why I put it in there. I don't feel necessary to put every director under oath, honestly, but I just want to have that protection for us. And, you know, it's just there for the public to know that they're reassured that there's not going to be a backroom deal made. And we're voting for somebody on false pretenses, so it's just that simple for me. But to your question, I would say, yeah, if that ever were to arise again, then we would contact our solicitor, and we would say, "We would like to pursue action here" and see if there is a case, and then it would be up for, I guess, Ms. Kubia to decide if there is a case there, or, you know, the administration or us, so.
Further discussion on second round. Council President Lavelle.
Very briefly, um, and I'm, in reading this, this reads with the authority to approve nominations of individuals to serve as head, that in quotation marks, director, chief, or manager. I don't think we've ever, I don't think we interview managers, so, to the best of my knowledge. So, I would, I would just strike that, that's all.
Absolutely, I agree, yes.
And then, under, under the procedures, I think this is very well-intended, I don't think it's practical, which is section D. "The president shall request that any council member with questions they would like answered by the nominee in writing prior to the hearing to submit those questions to the clerk within three days of the notification of the hearing." Members aren't going to do that. I'm just being honest. And, and, I'm just being honest.
Well, I mean, how often do we interview, right?
Right, and then members also will show up that day with new information, so I, I just don't think that's practical, that's all. Those were my two comments. Oh, and to answer members' questions, who would give the oath? It was, it's actually whoever is presiding, and under this, the president of council is presiding. So, it would be the president of council who would have to administer the oath. Well, according, according to your bill, I would have to.
Okay. No further discussion. We have a motion to approve on the table, so we will proceed with that motion. All those in favor of Bill 1423, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Affirmative recommendation with some potential...
Yeah, we'll work that out.
Language changes prior to final. We now move on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilmember Warwick.
A new paper is Bill 1411, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with Tool Design LLC for costs associated with the West Pittsburgh Reach Neighborhood Mobility Plan, and providing for the payment of costs thereof not to exceed $104,274.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1411, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1412.
Bill 1412, resolution authorizing the taking, appropriating, and condemning by the city of Pittsburgh of certain easements necessary for the completion of temporary construction work for sidewalk construction and associated miscellaneous work for public transportation purposes through eminent domain, and further authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary incidental acquisition costs related thereto at an amount not to exceed $25,000, reimbursable at 80%.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Second, discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is on the border of my district and Councilwoman Mosley's district. It's on Councilwoman Mosley's side of the street, and I'm trying to, I've got the packet, thank you, Madam Clerk, and I'm kind of studying why this city is taking an entire kind of business district parcel, when the question seems to be around the sidewalk. And so, I just, you know, again, this is a big packet with other kinds of stuff we spent lots of time on in the last week, so I didn't get the answers before today. And I wondered if the councilman wouldn't mind if we motioned to hold this one one week so we can get more information about, you know, it's a, there's a lot of utility work going on in this part of Penn Avenue, and again, that we, we really split, and we've got a lot of input and complaints, and now it's moved on to people's gas construction, and there are patches, and there's just a lot of, a lot of citizen input. So, I would, I wouldn't mind having some time to check in with the community on, on what is going on in this, this new, new effort.
Motion to hold one week?
Second.
Any discussion?
Did you want to?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. That takes us to Bill 1413.
Bill 1413, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a supplemental agreement or agreements with CDR McGuire, Inc. for project design management services and reviews in connection with various city of Pittsburgh projects to add funding for the preliminary engineering phase, increasing the total not to exceed to $3,711,256.73, a net increase of $0, reimbursable at 95%.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to the Human Resources Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Sharland. We have one new paper, Bill 1141.
Bill 1141, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Department of Human Resources, and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement or agreements with the county of Allegheny to support children, youth, and family programs administered by the Department of Human Services at a cost not to exceed $4,200,000 for a one-year pilot agreement.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to the Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first new paper is Bill 1406.
Bill 1406, resolution further amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 Through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing the Open Door by $8,500 and Increasing Crafton Heights United Presbyterian Church Doing Business as the Open Door Youth Outreach by $8,500 and Authorize Subsequent Agreements."
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss, but I'm not sure what we did.
Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill 1414.
Bill 1414, resolution providing for an agreement or agreements with Clio Consulting for a historic survey of the Beachview District and related costs in the amount not to exceed $10,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1415.
Bill 1415, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of permits, licenses, and inspections to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a professional services agreement or agreements with Ground Technology, Inc. Doing Business as Diapolonia, Diapolonia Geotechnical Professional Service that include assessments, evaluations, land remediation plans, and expert testimony of properties subject to active life safety code enforcement violations for a total cost not to exceed $300,000 over three years.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am, um, I just want to make some questions about landslides. Is there someone from PLI here? No one's here from PLI. There's just so much, right? I mean, I, I think many of us have had residents who were forced out of their homes, right? And like, you know, immediate condemnations because of risk of landslides. We know that in my district, we think we had one of those condemnations, and a large part of Polish Hill fell onto the east busway, shut it down for several days. I'm not sure what the cost is going to be. And, and just a little farther down in the same neighborhood, there's another retaining wall that we just voted on recently for a million dollars, or maybe it's later in this agenda, I can't remember, to stabilize also on the busway. And, a few of us are, were here, I think, many, many years ago, when in a budget amendment that failed, Councilwoman from District 4 motioned to add a position in-house for geotechnical services. I think it was a soil hydrologist or something. I seem to recollect that I voted yes, but the motion failed. I have an entirely different part of my district, I think what is currently the city's largest city-on-retaining wall that was just completed. Uh, because, you know, one neighborhood was substantially, part of a neighborhood was falling onto another part of a, a different neighborhood, so, um... It's time to revisit subcontracts for geotechnical services, I think, right? We subcontracted, and, and many cities are doing, you know, have done this. This is, you know, kind of now very common, but we especially accelerated the amount of work that the city did in-house when the city had to fire half its workers, you know, in near bankruptcy in the nineteen, like, 80s or 90s, actually should memorize the year, right? But that's not where we are now, even though we keep saying, you know, that it's still a fairly tight operating budget. We wish we were contributing even more to our retained earnings or rainy day fund or, or, and to our pensions. But, you know, is this actually cost-effective now? Is, is my question. We're just kind of, are closing the budget season for 2025, but I feel like that we have some time to really look at, there's diminishing returns, right? If you've got a little bit of work, it's more expensive to carry the workforce in-house. You know, we've got a budget for each position for five years. We have to carry the pension and, and health benefits for those workers. And so, it makes sense to, to have, to outsource some of the work. But I, I feel like we probably crossed the diminishing returns here, and that we're paying so much to external contractors, because there's, if there's that much magnitude of work, might we actually be able to do more work spending less money if it were in houses? Just going to open into question. I'm not going to hold this one up, because work needs to be done. But thank you for allowing me my two cents there, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Yeah, just want to say that, we see this bill every year, so, uh, this, this doesn't relate to the larger issue of landslides that we're seeing. This is like, you know, to remediate that, this is... Are you at the floor? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were at the floor.
My mic's off.
All right, I'll keep talking. So, this, um, yeah, this here, we see every year, and happy to see we can up it in the budget for, you know, more money, but I think the answer to your question is to actually, for how we can get more revenue in the, in the pot so that we can actually fix all the landslides. Diapolonia is literally on call so that we can see how bad the situation's getting. So, um, that, this is, my understanding is mostly for emergency services so that we can understand, uh, to remediate things faster. But, you know, to actually do this, like, I put in $200,000 to, to do, um, the actual plans for a landslide behind the, a gas station in my district, and so, there's additional funds that even need to be spent for individual projects on, like, this isn't trying to cover all of the landslides in the city. This is just, when it happens, are they going to, oh, and for this particular thing? I mean, there's other, you know, geotechnical things that are happening, but, um, if you were... I mean, there's other, you know, geotechnical things that are happening, but, um, if you recall, we also had to fight in court the two, um, old froggy, uh, I don't know, froggy buildings or something downtown that they wouldn't, um, demolish it. You know, they couldn't demolish, yeah, so this was also, this also, uh, the contract with D'Apollonia covered that as well, so. Just to provide some plans for our lawyers in court to, or our expedited engineers to, to, uh, you know, combat them in court. So appreciate this work moving us forward, uh, so we can continue to do the good work that we do for emergency services. Thanks.
Council member, or Council President Lavell?
Thank you. Very briefly, I think both members are actually correct. Um, Councilwoman Wilson is correct that we do need to see more funding, um, for these services because this is a growing problem within our city and will continue to be so as we continue to be, uh, have more rain than ever and continue in that direction. And I think Councilwoman Gross is also correct that we should probably begin looking to explore to bring someone in-house that can be more proactive as opposed to emergency needed, but rather, because there have been situations where residents have said, we think this is going to happen. We're looking at this hillside and then the city doesn't actually do anything until it actually slips. And so we're not being proactive enough to avoid having to bring on the emergency services. So I think both members are correct. It is an issue that we need to take on very seriously.
Councilwoman Kale Smith?
I'm just curious why it's under P L I, not D O M E, that's all.
And, sorry, Director Green also joined us if you had a question.
That's all right. I don't need him to answer. I'm waiting for him to answer an email from almost a week ago.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Warwick?
I was just, so, so, you know, three hundred thousand over three years, so that's roughly a hundred thousand a year. Are we maxing this out? I mean, in the past, so this has been ongoing. Are we spending all that money every year? Maybe Director Green would have the answer, yeah.
I can address that question. Uh, we do not max it out typically. That is, uh, a conservative estimate to ensure we have sufficient funding, uh, to meet needs. But we have not, uh, maxed out that, uh, contract value in past years.
Do, do we know how much we are spending? And I mean, not, not the not to exceed, exceed, but like, actual how much we're spending over, just hypothetically, pat, or, sorry, for example, the past three years or?
Sorry, Monica, uh, is also, Monica Bender is also on with me. Monica, do you have a sense of that?
Yes, Monica Bender, Assistant Director of Licensing and Administration with P L I. Um, we've seen probably close to a hundred and fifty thousand in the last three years. Um, and a lot of that was contributed to larger projects that have taken, um, much more time and much more geotechnical efforts to provide, uh, reporting to our department. So, um, I think Kenze might have been one of the, one of the locations that, um, drew a lot of funds.
Okay, yeah, I was just, because, I mean, so a hundred and fifty thousand over three years would not be the same as an, right? An employee would be significantly more, I don't know, I'm just, it, it's good to have the numbers in the conversation, like what we've been spending versus, you know, if we were to create a position.
We can always provide, you know, poll reports and provide the funding obligations that we've expended. Um, but yeah, generally, the hundred thousand a year is, is, is a generous amount. Um, but would, would meet our needs if, if something similar to like Kenze came up again.
Yeah, and then maybe also just to look at, um, again, looking into next year or, I guess, two thousand twenty-six at that point. Like, what, what positions do we have? Or maybe there's a position where it could be this emergency work and then other work. Really, I mean, I'm sure there's more than enough work related to landslides, right, that a person could do in this, at, at the city. So just something to think about. Thank you.
Further discussion? I know, I, well, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. Uh, since we have not exceeded the three hundred thousand dollar amount, um, what has been carried over? Is there money in that pot still or are we starting at zero again?
So this, this is a, again, Monica Bender, this is a new contract. Uh, we went back out through the solicitation process. Um, the original contract was, um, an open-ended, I think it may have had a not to exceed million-dollar mark. And, um, I believe a couple of years back, um, previous director, Kinter, came to the table. And, um, it was requested that we be more specific with our funding amounts. Um, so we were, we, we, and, and also with the, uh, current, um, the, the previous contract, it had existed for, I want to say, five-plus years, so we put it back out through, through the solicitation. Um, and we're competitive with bidding and, so this is a brand-new contract, brand-new funding. The, there, um, there is, the, any funding that would be outstanding for the previous contract is already obligated to existing projects.
That's, that's what I was looking for. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further comments?
I was, I know I missed the beginning of this conversation, but I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to say that, um, or to, to amplify what Planning Director, um, Jamil Bay has been discussing here and there is the need for the council, for the need for the city to have an emergency, um, not preparedness plan, but mitigation plan. Many other municipalities and jurisdictions have emergency mitigation plans, which are, um, proactive in nature and could help us determine what we need to do to, um, buffer against the worst effects of, say, climate change or other stressors or shocks that hit our system. So, um, while I agree, it's a both and. I agree that we could potentially look at hiring a geotechnical professional in-house. Maybe that's the right move. If we were able to develop that plan, um, that could inform what we would need to do to fully bolster our, either our staff or our contractors or whatever we need to, um, buffer against the worst effects of, of our shocks and stressors coming our way, like landslides. It's the biggest stressor that I can think of, so. Um, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Bill fourteen fifteen? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill fourteen sixteen.
Bill fourteen sixteen, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of permits, licenses, and inspections for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the International Code Council, I C C, for the purchase of two thousand twenty-one I C C building code books for building code officers and officials at a cost not to exceed forty thousand, fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Bill fourteen sixteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill fourteen seventeen.
Bill fourteen seventeen, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoning Code, Article One Introduction and Establishment, Section nine oh two point oh three, zoning map to rezone Parcels Forty-five A one sixty-six and Forty-five E forty-three from single-unit detached residential high-density to urban center mixed-use.
Uh, motion to send to Planning Commission for report and recommendation.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, um, the motion to send to Planning Commission for report and final, and recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. And, uh, Councilman Wilson, I understand that you have a bill that you would like to?
Yeah, I have a motion to discharge Bill, um, motion to discharge the, the hold on Bill two thousand twenty-four zero nine five nine and return the bill to the standing committees.
Second.
There was a hold that this, that, that this is being brought back sooner than the weeks that were indicated on the original hold.
Yeah, the, the bill is a, um, I just want to say the motion first, but to explain what the motion is, this is, um, you're seeing it now. This is the bill that creates the Entertainment District down on the North Shore. And this was, uh, held and we've had meetings, um, with, involving, um, different representatives from the city, including zoning, mayor's administration, representatives from the entities like, Carnegie, Carnegie Museums, in particular, the, the, um, uh, War, Andy Warhol Museum, um, the Pirate Stadium, and then also the Steelers. S E A. So if I can get a second on that motion.
Second.
We have a, so we have a second, and, yeah, any discussion? We will have to do a roll call vote and we do need a super majority. I just wanted to make sure members were aware of that, but, um.
So the motion is just on the discharge to bring it back to the?
Yeah, it's held till next week, so it'll be a week early.
Okay.
Okay, so we do need, uh, a roll call.
Mr. Charland? Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Lavell?
Aye.
Mr. Mosley?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger Chair?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
And I have a.
Motion passes, so, yep.
Thank you. And I, so now that the bill is here, I just wanted to make a motion and then I'd like to explain, uh, the bill or the amendment here. But first, I believe I have to do motion to approve?
Has to go to Planning Commission?
Yeah, all of them has to go to Planning Commission, but I believe.
Please tell them.
I gotta amend the bill, so I believe it's a motion.
Yeah, you did motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
And I, the motion bef, I'm sorry, the, these papers that you see before you, I want to thank you, Luis, uh, for, and my staff for, um, making this happen. So we have a clean version of the amendment, because I do plan on making an amendment by substitution today so that it shows up, uh, clean in, in Legistar, uh, for, for the, for the Planning Commission if sent there. And then I also have all the strike-throughs because, um, you know, uh, I think it's good practice to, to do that so everyone can see what the bill looked like prior, since it is a larger bill. And, um, strike-throughs are language taken out, bold is, language added, and underline, I'm sorry, bold and added, bold and underline is added. Uh, essentially, uh, the differences are, as you can see from the email, um, that I sent over last night. The, this amendment, uh, does create a new provision, uh, for the establishment of the entertainment districts. And this, um, the minimum area to create these types of districts are going from, uh, eight acres to twenty acres. The reasoning behind that is we want to make it more of a, um, simply put, just more challenging for people to create these types of districts. Because if it's smaller, then you could buy a few lots and create it on eight acres. But if it's twenty acres, then you need a whole North Shore to do it, a whole, you need a whole, you know, South Side area to do it. So I think it's, um, I think it's important that, um, that type of amendment is in there. Uh, the ordinance is also allows for entities like Accra Shore Stadium. You know, every time there's a new sign, it doesn't matter how big it is, you know, it has to go to the Z B A and they need approval for each individual sign. So this gives a certain percentage on the side of that, on each side of, of the stadiums, that's, that's allowed. And so it's more clear, there's less, I mean, less red tape for, for them. But, I mean, also just doesn't clog up our Z B A on things that are ultimately approved. And, um, it just gives clear direction. I think that there's, this discussion happened before me, so, like, a lot of things I've done on council, I'm trying to move forward and create a better process. But also at the same time, we have the, we have the, um, you know, we have, uh, things like the draft coming. And so this allows for, uh, different signage particulars, temporary signage to happen, uh, temporary screens. So, you know, whenever that takes place. Uh, but also there is an entity like the Warhol Museum that relies on, uh, funding, you know, different types of funding. But ultimately, their major source of funding is whenever they send the artwork around the world. And then there's obviously some cost to that. There's been some, some problems because things get damaged. But this can create another revenue stream for them since they would be allowed to have advertising. So I would appreciate the support today to send this to the Planning Commission for a report and recommendation. And then once it gets back here, then we can, you know, deliver a debt more. Obviously, there's another public hearing that would have to take place. So appreciate all the support I can get today, today.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, uh, Councilman Wilson, I will tell you, I was glad to see your support of this because I was on the S E A board. I was briefed and, you know, introduced. And I want people to know, this is not just oversized billboards. It's really artwork. It's, it's really cool and really different designs that we've not seen in our area before. And living to that area, again, I told panels and the people I discussed it with, I said, well, you know, um, you need to talk to Councilman Wilson, so I'm glad that you, um, you see the vision here and the opportunities to, for others to make more money and have it in, in that specific area, I think is a good idea. I, I didn't know why you expanded it, but that makes complete sense now that you say that, so, thank you. I'm supportive.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Gross?
And I know that the councilman has worked on this now for a long time back and forth to get it to this point. And since I'm just now, because we, we were just handed this version. Is it creating a new zoning type of overlay or is it particular and only for those North Shore areas?
It allow.
Entertory, sorry.
Entertory. Is it, uh, it allows for, I believe, others to, that's why I was, others to apply, that's why I was explaining that it, it goes from, um, you know, to create this type of district, you'd have to have at least twenty acres to even, you know.
But other twenty-acre areas in the city could then also try to become entertainment districts? Or is it just, yeah, I don't know if I like that, I think I like that less than what they were doing for their own. But, um, yeah, I'm not going to block this from going to, I know you've been working on it for a long time, so.
It would need council support, obviously.
Go to Planning Commission, right? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I failed to mention that, um, you know, if you travel other cities, uh, there, you know, are some, some pretty cool entertainment districts and, uh, I feel personally that we're behind the times in Pittsburgh. And I think that this is important to, to do in this area. And so I appreciate the support today. Thanks. So now I'm in the phase where I motion to amend my substitution. Motion to amend my substitution.
Second.
Second, discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of a bill amended by substitution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And, um, now, thank you. And now that the bill is amended, like, a motion to send to Planning Commission for, uh, report and recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor of sending the bill for motion, for Planning Commission recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be sent to Planning Commission. Thank you very much. That moves us on to Innovation Performance Asset Management and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. And actually, we have exhausted the bill in her committee, so the, that moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
New Papers, Bill fourteen oh four, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for twenty-three-ten West Liberty Avenue, Pittsburgh one-five-two-two-six at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill fourteen oh four, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill fourteen oh five.
Bill fourteen oh five, resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license from Los Patrones, Inc., located at eleven thirty-eight to eleven forty-one Freeport Road to the applicant, Reva Hospitality Group, doing business as Reva Modern Indian Cuisine, located at two-twenty North Highland Avenue, Pittsburgh one-five-two-oh-six pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code.
Uh, motion to hold for a public.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a motion to hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for a public hearing. That does exhaust our council meeting agenda, meeting announcements this afternoon at one-thirty. So in about ten minutes, council will hold a cablecast post-agenda discussion on N B affordable properties. Thursday, January thirtieth, with sessions at two P M, two-thirty P M, and three P M, council will hold a briefing on the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. Next week. Next week, council will hold a regular meeting on Tuesday, February 4th, and standing committees' meeting on Wednesday, February 5th, both at 10:00 AM. Also, on Monday, February 3rd, a little out of order, sorry, at 1:30 PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on three bills, 2025, 1425, 1426, and 1452. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline, you may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything for members? Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Thank you, I can't remember if I called for a public hearing for PLI, but I'm going to call for a public hearing for PLI, and I'd like to have it in the evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll schedule the public hearing on PLI.
Thank you.
Anything else from members?
I, one more thing, I also want to call for a post-agenda regarding the zoning, all the different zoning changes. I think yesterday, after listening to that meeting, there's so much confusion between everybody and everything, and I really, for myself, would like to know all the details on what, what can happen, what could, should happen, what might be beneficial, what might not be beneficial, and I really think that we, you know, should have had that conversation before it went to city planning. I think council needs to look at some of the things that are happening with city planning and the Planning Commission. I'm looking into legislation, I'm talking to attorneys now to see what we can do, and legally, what other people are looking into things as well. I think that none of this would happen if we didn't have, if we had had conversations early on to discuss all the different proposals out there, and all the different things that could or could not happen, addressed any unintended consequences, or addressed any concerns that the public had or that we had. I, I do think that we have done a lot in terms of, which I didn't hear a lot about yesterday, in our district, to address more things with affordability, and one of the things that we do a lot, that we've done a lot of, is we've done three neighborhood stabilization programs, which we renovated homes and helped people in the neighborhood get into those homes. I don't even know where we are with those programs, because we've bought, I think, seven homes in Elliot, and we're waiting for those to be, to be renovated. So I think it's understanding exactly what is happening with all the different properties, all the different efforts, and all the different zonings, and what's needed and what's not needed, because we're paying $6 million for a comprehensive plan, which should be driving our zoning, not zoning driving our, our comprehensive plan. It's like, we, we've got the, you know, tail wagging the dog, so I think that we need to have a really comprehensive understanding of what's happening, and I think maybe if we have a post-agenda, I'll bring people to the table who can explain everything, both sides of everything, and give us hopefully a clearer understanding. This is not my area of expertise, I mean, when, the zoning stuff, I mean, every time I hear more, I'm more confused than I am, you know, understanding of what's happening, so I really think it would be helpful, not only to me, but to a lot of people. So motion for a post-agenda on zoning amendments, or zoning, zoning proposals, zoning proposals for the City of Pittsburgh.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post-agenda hearing will be scheduled.
And I'd like to schedule that in the evening as well, too.
In the evening, thank you. Anything further from members?
I wanted to wish everyone who's celebrating a happy Lunar New Year, and this is Lunar New Year, it's the year of the snake, and...
They must be elected.
I hope that it brings health and happiness and good fortune to everyone, and I also just wanted to note, there are many Pittsburghers who are new Pittsburghers who might be celebrating Lunar New Year far away from their friends and family, so I hope they're able to find each other and celebrate the New Year together. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.